Good evening, everybody. Welcome to the Georgetown School Committee meeting of Thursday, January tenth, 2019. It's our first meeting of the new year, so I want to wish everybody a very happy new year. So, before we start the meeting, if we could please rise for the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
One good thing about this January is it's the lowest amount of snow we've received in like five years in January. So, yes.
Fine with me.
But I do think it's coming.
After the first ten days.
I do think it's coming.
Usually late.
It's the late ten days.
Last several years, late January is when it started.
Yeah, it's hit us.
And then it goes into April.
February and late January. It's okay, it doesn't last as long after.
I'm keeping my fingers crossed.
For snow?
No, for no s-. No, I actually would like some snow, not a ton.
You can go to the mountains and visit.
I would love it to snow on the weekends, the vacations.
Of course you would, right. The seniors would like it to.
It can do whatever, it can do whatever it wants on the weekends.
Would like it to snow more on the school days, right?
Oh, yeah.
Oh, yeah. Okay, so I'm gonna just start off the meeting with some approval of minutes that we've had. So I will make a motion to approve regular session minutes from December seventeenth, twenty eighteen, as well as acceptance of warrants, twenty-six P nineteen, twenty-eight P nineteen, twenty-seven V nineteen, and twenty-nine V nineteen. So moved.
Second.
Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye, thank you. We have Chloe here tonight. We'd like to find out what's going on in the school.
So, the catwalk for cancer most likely will be on March first, but you know, we haven't had the best luck with dates. But I think it will be March first. But yeah, it's going well. We're just contacting businesses right now, getting people to sign up, so.
So much fun.
That was a great time last year. You did a great job with that.
Those grounds that you guys had on were so amazing.
Yeah, no, all the businesses that we had were so great and everything they gave us was wonderful. So hopefully it can go as smoothly as last year. But um, but yeah, that's pretty much what we're doing in student council right now.
Good.
The girls tomorrow have a home game at six thirty basketball. And then the boys have one away at Ipswich tomorrow at six thirty. And then wrestling has a match at nine AM on Sunday.
Nine AM Sunday?
Yeah.
Wow.
And then the Seussical is going well. Our practices are good. It's looking pretty good. But the dates are February seventh, eighth, and ninth. And on the ninth, we have two shows. So we have like a matinee because a lot of the like members of the cast, it's like double. There's two roles, like two people playing roles, so.
Oh, that'll be great.
So now we're having four shows, so two for each person.
That'd be great.
So that'll allow more students to participate, to take a role and act. Okay, yeah, 'cause I think we usually have three shows and so I was wondering if four would be a bit much, but I see that's a, got an important benefit.
Yeah, so we're working hard to get.
Good for the public, too.
Yeah, to get all the tickets for each, for each show would be the same. So like everyone has the same amount of people, so.
Good, yeah.
And then I think the last thing I have is that NHS, they're starting like applications and stuff like that for the junior class. And I think we have like their induction in March, is it?
Yes, usually.
Oh, nice. Good. Okay, and then midterms are coming up?
Yeah, that's in two weeks.
Yep.
Yeah, it's good.
Then you can relax after that.
Yeah, I mean, I have study hall the last day, so I don't have to really come in. I mean, I should, but. Yeah, so, we're good.
It's going by. I think it's going by quick this year. I do think it's, it's a quick year, but.
Yeah, talking about Disney and like chorus and bands, so that's also there.
That's a great time.
Yeah, it's a lot going on. And the trip to Quebec, too.
Mm-hmm.
Where's that going? Because I did see that they're still looking, they're still allowing people to go.
They still have lots of.
Yeah, they still, all the morning announcements are still offering spots, so I don't know. But I think it's good.
Okay. Well, thank you.
Thanks, Chloe.
Hey, anyone here from the public that would like to talk about anything on the agenda this evening? We are graced this evening with some of our students, which we love to see. So we have FBLA students here.
Lisa, come on up.
We have Lisa Ryer here with.
Alyssa Gata.
With Alyssa and I want, I want to call you Amanda.
I know, she looks like Amanda.
Hi, Lindsay, how are you?
I'm good, how are you?
Nice to see you.
Nice to see you, too.
How are you, Alyssa?
Good, how are you?
You busy with your college applications?
Yeah.
The board is getting, the board is getting filled now. There's a lot of progress there.
That's good.
Everyone's getting accepted. It's exciting seeing where people are gonna go.
It's late. Fun time of year.
Oh, there we go.
So, so what are your positions with FBLA?
So I'm the co-president along with Carmine.
Okay.
I'm the vice president of marketing.
Good for you.
And the other ones are Sarah's the vice president of operations and Jillian's the vice president of finance.
Okay, Sarah.
Amayius and Jillian Bridges.
Great, okay. Thank you, thank you both for coming tonight. And I appreciate you coming, too. That's great that you are here with us. It's an exciting time because we were so used to DECA and now we have FBLA, so I'm excited to hear how things are going.
Yes, well, as always, I'd love for my students to talk and if you need me to go in on that.
Sure.
Alright, so as you may know, we went to Chicago and we got to like explore the city. We went to the Federal Reserve on the first day, but we really got to learn more about FBLA through the different workshops that we did. So I participated in ones where I learned how to organize a community service event because FBLA really, yeah, emphasizes community service. So I learned how to like organize one of those. I learned how to create a presentation and effectively present it to an audience. And we learned the basics of FBLA because we're all new, so a lot of the officers went to the basic presentation class.
A couple, I went to a lot of the same workshops that she did, but I did another one with this guy. So like they bring in a lot of people that are public speakers and that's what they focus on, is like inspirational speaking and things like that. So I went to this one with this guy and he basically taught everybody how to like be, like learn out what kind of communicator they are and like how to be confident in the way that you communicate. So we did activities that were interactive with like people from all over the country, which while we were at Chicago, we also learned that a lot of the FBLA stuff is based in the Midwest. So we really did meet people from all over the country and it was pretty cool to be able to just like see how different chapters from not just in Massachusetts operate and meet people that have like a lot of different backgrounds than we do.
Which you wouldn't really do in DECA unless you got to the Nationals, right?
Yeah.
Right, so that was a smaller group.
Yeah, so for DECA, we would go to states in Boston and that's with like just Massachusetts. So if you go to Nationals, you see the people from all over the country, but a lot of the people just go to states.
About how many kids were at FBLA in Chicago?
Three thousand.
Three thousand.
Wow.
It was, they have three different locations for their annual Fall Leadership Conference, the National Fall Leadership Conference, and you could choose which one to go to. So this year, they were in Chicago, Albuquerque, and Charlotte, I believe. And so the officers voted on which one we wanted to attend at the end of last year and then we came and got approval for it from the school committee and Chicago was the winner.
Great choice.
Good choice, yeah.
Business hub, yep.
It's a beautiful city.
My son Michael went and he had a fabulous time and I saw a lot of fun pictures and you guys did a lot of really interesting things.
We tried to blend FBLA and networking and workshops and learning with seeing the city while we're there because travel, you know, is so important. And we couldn't go to Chicago without, you know, seeing the Bean and Navy Pier and having deep dish pizza.
Yep.
So we tried to do all that. We did the double-decker bus, it was a little chilly.
Did I also hear a basketball game was included in there?
It wasn't included in the plan.
Right, but it was, I think that's great.
It was a spur of the moment, one evening, people wanted to go and because we had the two chaperones, I could take some. It ended up being the senior boys and me. But it was.
Thank you, thank you, that was much appreciated.
You're welcome.
Chicago Bulls.
Yeah.
They even spoke to me in the row. They didn't look, they didn't know me. It was very good.
That's funny.
Yeah.
Well, that's good. I'm glad that you enjoyed it. So what, what are you thinking in terms of the difference? What do you mostly see the difference between DECA and FBLA at this point? I know it's new, but relatively new.
One of the major differences is FBLA focuses more on gaining a background in the categories and learning rather than competition. With DECA, it was more competition-based. You had to take the standardized test and that really affected your scores with your presentation. Whereas anyone can go to districts, anyone can go to states, anyone can go to Nationals, and you can go to workshops there, you can compete. It's just more learning-based from what I've gathered.
So were there competitions?
Um, not at Chicago, but we have one coming up. The ta, the date is TBD, but.
Is that the one at North, uh, South?
SNHU.
SNHU, yeah.
Oh, okay.
That one is.
What is SNH?
For.
I know, but what is, what is that one?
That's for the freshmen from the creativity showcase who were awarded medals through the Young Inventors Program.
Young inventors, that's, okay.
That's great.
So that's a little different.
The FBLA states isn't that league one day.
Do you know what date that is?
Oh, you said to be.
Yeah. It's TBD. It's in March, right? End of March, early April.
So, so you went to the Nationals to get the background. Now, this is a competition and it's the state?
We went to a conference, that's where we.
Yeah.
In Chicago, we went to the Fall Leadership Conference and that's where we, we, I think it was really important that we went to that because we kind of were all walking in blind because we started with DECA, which there are a lot of similarities between the two, but there's just a lot more aspects to FBLA, I think. There's a big community service. There's a lot of, like you need a community service like standard to be able to like send a certain amount of people and everything like that. So there's just a lot of different things that factor into it that we got to learn at the conference and we also learned a lot more about the events and like how they're run because it's similar to the style that you can do of DECA. Like a lot of the events have teams, which in DECA, if you do a role play, unless you're in certain categories, it's individually, do it by yourself. But in most of the categories in FBLA, you can do them with a team. So we just kind of got to learn a lot of different things, but we are gonna be going to the competition in March or April.
And a lot of those, a lot of those categories are like real-life scenarios, too, like job interviews or doing a sales pitch, public speaking. Again, like Lindsay talked about inspirational speaking, they have a category for that. So it's like more broad compared to the categories with DECA.
And like we said when we went, there was a lot of people from the Midwest. And when we were prior to going to Fall Leadership Conference, we were sort of looking at the categories with the rest of the chapter at one of our meetings and we were like, there's a lot that have to do with agriculture and stuff like that. So when we actually went to the Fall Leadership Conference, we kind of understood more why that's there, but it's actually pretty cool because that's like the livelihood of a lot of the people that are in these events. So it's kind of, it can benefit you in high school, but it can also play with you for the rest of your life.
Yeah, absolutely.
Sounds kind of inclusive.
Yeah.
But if somebody wants to participate, no matter what your level of skill or experience is, you can participate.
And you don't even need to take a business class to be part of FBLA, whereas in DECA, you had to take it. So it really limited members, but now anyone can join, which is really cool because the numbers are gonna grow.
How many are you in this year? How many kids?
Yeah, fifty-two.
Yeah.
Fifty-two. Is there a requirement for community service?
I think there is. We, we're looking, we're looking into what we can do now. We've been putting out opportunities to the rest of the program the entire year, but I think that we, we've done some, but we still need to do more to complete it, but.
So that's on top of the already required for graduation?
Yeah.
So like I recently contacted the Amayius House. We had a speaker come in, she described what the Amayius House does. And the officer team, we're planning, we're gonna like do a fundraiser, some sort of event so that we can get supplies for the Amayius House. We just have to figure everything out because a lot of clubs are doing drives right now. So we want to wait until those are over so we can really maximize what we get.
Right.
Makes sense.
That's a good idea.
And the committee may remember Michael Kelly.
Yes, of course.
Our glass trophy winner from, from Nationals.
He brought in the, the milk crate with all of his awards.
He did, you're right.
With all, and he would take out, yeah.
And he came yesterday afternoon and spoke to the membership at our FBLA meeting. So I think.
That's nice, so that he's still like really involved and really wants to see this program, I'm sure, versus DECA just be as successful because we've done so well. And I, and Lisa, you've done a great job with that.
Thank you.
I really appreciate you continuing with it.
Thank you.
So what do you have for us tonight? You gonna show us pictures?
Yeah, so these are some of the pictures. Yeah, Josh, some of the pictures that we have from Chicago, a lot of them are some of the sightseeing we did, but there's also a lot, there's a couple of people in business attire.
Oh, that's beautiful, look at that.
Looks like you went in a nice way.
It was early November, but it wasn't too cold, except up on the top of the bus.
That's the Bean.
The Bean.
Yeah, that was.
That's a great picture with the reflection, I didn't see that.
Oh, there's the Bean.
Is that the Federal Reserve?
They have a money museum, so they had millions of dollars there. It was, it was pretty interesting. When we walked fifteen minutes to the museum, the students were so excited to be going, but even when we got there, I think they realized it was pretty cool.
Yeah, oh, definitely. Oh, that's a great picture.
Oh, yeah, it's pretty cool. I don't know why they're like small all the time.
The Bean again.
Well, everybody's, looks happy.
Now, did all fifty-three, fifty-two kids go?
No.
And that's pretty much it.
We said that we would have it at thirty.
Oh, okay.
It gets harder logistically to move a lot of students unless you start renting buses and. It was, it was expensive as it was, so we didn't want to get into that. But twenty signed up, so all twenty were able to go.
Oh, good.
You know, it was football and soccer was still going on, so it was hard to make that decision, I recall.
Yeah, I'm sure Lisa, that would have been hard if you had, you know, forty and then you had to decide who the ten were that wouldn't, right?
That would be very hard.
You probably would have gone with seniors, probably would have gone. Yeah, well, I'm glad, I'm glad that you didn't have to do that.
Yes, me too.
And it is easier. I mean, sometimes when you get to that big group, it's much more difficult to reel them in.
We used basically public transportation to get around from the airport to the, near the hotel. We did a lot of walking. We saw lots of students wheeling their suitcases around. We took a bu, city bus to get to the museum of industry. So in moving twenty students with two chaperones was, you know, challenging, but they were really good kids, so we just kept counting and counting and counting heads.
And was it you and Mary?
It was.
That's great. Well, I, I'm interested to see how the things go in March or April.
Yeah.
And how that goes. So if you would, wouldn't mind coming back to give us an, an update.
Sure.
We love when the students come here because you're the, you know, you're the reason why we're all here. And we just love to hear from you guys, which is why I always love having my student rep here to tell us what life is really like at the high school. All of our schools, it's so fun.
So thank you.
Thank you so much.
Thank you.
Appreciate you all coming. The Credit for Life Fair. Yes, while you're here, do you want to mention anything about that?
Sure. I guess I need to sit, right?
Well, it's up to you. Last year was the first year, right?
It was. Last year, we were very fortunate to receive a five thousand dollar grant from the Commonwealth of Massachusetts Treasurer's Office Innovation Fund. So we had our first Credit for Life Fair last year. It was at the Pearly School. And I know a lot of you were there. Pam was on our Oversight Committee. Lots of meetings to plan and organize from scratch. So this year, we wanted to do it again. There was no word from the Commonwealth on year-two grant money. So we reached out to TD Bank in Georgetown. Their manager was on our Oversight Committee last year and he provided about twelve or fifteen of his, of TD Bank people who came and did the credit checks and helped out at the fair. So Mary and I reached out to him and asked if TD might be able to sponsor the fair this year because we weren't anticipating any money from the Commonwealth. And they graciously did. They committed to providing two thousand dollars, which the paperwork is all in process. Suzanne's been involved in all of that.
Oh, that's great.
So we sat down with Ian from TD and went through the budget and had to cut a lot of things, obviously. Some things we can reuse from last year, the banners and things like that. But after that commitment, we, I heard from a colleague at a PLC that the Commonwealth has now released funds or is in the process of releasing funds for spring Credit for Life Fairs. So we are hopeful that we might be able to get year-two, which would be an additional, depending on what budget we submit, possibly an additional two thousand or twenty-five hundred, which would be really amazing.
Yeah.
So we picked the date, March eighth. March eighth, right? We have not decided on the time yet because we need to see if we have the funds to feed the students lunch again there or not. So, and we just had our first committee meeting for planning. So we're, we're starting to roll.
That's great. I heard that the kids just really enjoyed it. I loved the way, it was like real-life scenarios and, and things that.
Wonderful learning experience. And people from the biz, from the town, you know, contributed to helping advise and.
Yeah, local people with real expertise, you know. Banking, housing, travel, you know, all the different tables.
And that was one of the highlights for the students on their feedback survey, that they really enjoyed interacting with not only real, you know, real-life people, but people from town that they knew and were able to interact with and get advice from.
We had a few alums.
They learned they have to pay attention to having insurance before they plan to go on their vacation. Because you never know when you're gonna get a car accident.
Or break a leg.
Or break a leg. And if you don't have insurance, you're in trouble. So there were some real practical things that were really nice to, to see. I'm glad you're gonna be able to do it.
It's only seniors.
It's only seniors.
Yes, we.
But it's every senior, so that.
It's every senior. It's part of the Financial Literacy Two class.
They learn about trade-offs that they have to, they're going to have to make when, in their twenties. So the scenario is like when they're twenty-five years old, right, something like that.
Yes.
You know, in terms of the food, I don't know if you could ask the PTA if they would support you because they do like to fund things that involve a lot of people. And if it's the whole senior class, you know, they might be able to help you out. You know, I'd ask, won't hurt.
Yeah, that's a great idea.
You know, they, they like to do things like that in the past.
Thank you. And I think we, we sent the video last year, so you all.
Yeah, we did, yes, we saw that, yeah. That's great.
And then just the Young Inventors. I know that Mary's been very involved in that.
Yes, Mary has been.
I don't know if you realize that at the Creativity Fair this year, they actually had students who could choose to have their project judged. So they were able to get some folks in town, you know, entrepreneur, business kind of people in town who actually gave scores, right? So it was really, the projects were really good, but it was really nice to see that that feature was added this year for kids who wanted to get some feedback. You know, it was kind of like Shark Tank, right, you know, kind of.
I think that all came about because Mary worked with Veronica Lewis last year and pulled in this program. Veronica, you know, sort of founded and did extremely well with the program and is, you know, has a patent and her idea is really great about for whales not to beach themselves. So because Mary was involved, she, she connected with the Young Inventors Program and asked if we could bring it in. It was very, very close to our curriculum that we already did. So we allowed the students this year to choose whether to be judged on that or not. It had nothing to do with their class grade or their showcase grade. And many were brave and did, and that was great. And so we awarded, I think Principal Richards put out on his blog some photos of first, second, and third place winners in ninth grade. And then we were allowed to do a tenth grade first place winner. If students come into the school in tenth, eleventh, or twelfth grade, they're still put in creativity. So we have four students who we hope will go to Regionals at Southern Hampshire University.
Okay, that's, that's.
That's awesome.
That's great.
Good.
Yeah, lots of busy things going on, but very practical, hands-on things, which is really important.
Thank you.
You're welcome. Lisa, again, for taking the time out of your night.
You're very welcome. Thank you for having us. Thank you for.
Thanks, girls.
Bye-bye. Okay, so we have the walkaway report discussion that we're gonna talk about next.
Unless you, unless you have any questions on the goals or do you want to put that down further in the agenda?
Yeah, let's put that down further.
Perfect.
So we have Mr. Tiano. You want to come up with your group?
Chris and Caitlin are coming.
Your support, which is nice. Hi Caitlin, hi Chris.
Hi.
How are you?
Can we tell them your news, Jack?
Thanks for coming.
Can we tell them? Oh, Jack's gonna be daddy again.
Oh, my goodness. Congratulations.
Very exciting. In June, sixth.
This will be my sixth, Jack.
Congratulations. That's wonderful.
Yes, it is.
In June?
In June.
Nice.
We're very excited.
Great.
So thank you for having me here tonight. It's always a pleasure to present to you guys.
Really? Is it really? We tried to get that.
I'm a bit of a ham, so I like it.
He likes the audience.
We're not gonna put the camera like right on you.
It's gotta get my good side, but. So, you know, as you mentioned, I'm thrilled to have Chris and Caitlin here with me tonight as well.
It's nice that you guys came out.
We appreciate you here.
Just to talk a little bit about the sort of ominous, ominous report that's sort of out there. So basically, to give you a little bit of history, at the end of the year, last year, I knew that, you know, again, we're fortunate, the three of us started here together, which was, was really a nice piece. So at that point, we'd be entering our third year in really working on programs here at Georgetown. So it just seemed like the right time to really take a look at a specific program review for special education to see if the things that we've started to do for change within the district is really the right direction and if stakeholders believe that to be true as well. So really, the, the purpose, and I'll, I'll get a little more into it as we go into the slides, but the purpose of this really was to take a look at what are the things that we're doing and outside perspective, being able to commit and say, you know, these are the things we see are doing well. These are the things we think you could use some improvement on. So we have some recommendations that I'll go through with you tonight as well. But again, for me, it truly was, you know, I've, I've had this vision for special ed that I, I hope I've shared with, with the committee and I need to know if it's the right one. So that, that's really the, the purpose of it. So there's a few different agencies out there that do this type of work. I've worked with Walker Consulting in the past. So they were honestly the first people I reached out to and I spoke with them. We had a really good conversation, so that was the reasoning for choosing them.
We have, so that's another, I mean, certainly what Jack said is absolutely true. But, you know, every, every so many years, four or five years, we try to, and we did have the CPR, so we had a compliance audit, but this is of a different nature, right? This, this one is, but, so we used Walker before. And so they're somewhat familiar with our, with our programs.
So in, in every six years, the Department of Education does require districts to do a special education review. It does not have to be done by an outside agency. It does not have to be done by an outside agencies, you know, I could've worked with the team here and, and done it on our own. But again, just based on where we are in, in three years here with the district, it just seemed like, uh, that was the right direction.
Yeah, absolutely.
So, Julie Muse Fisher was the consultant that we worked really closely with. She, um, is also a special education attorney. Um, so, I felt like that was a really good choice for us. John Vare is the director of the program, and he is the former assistant superintendent for Boston Public Schools. So, he gave us a, a nice perspective as well. So, again, this sort of goes into the reasoning as to why we did it, you know, um, hey, my, my teacher was biased, so I hired an external evaluator. Well, certainly, I'm gonna be biased, you know, the, the, the changes that I've tried to make and implement within the district, I, you know, I didn't, 'cause I think they're the best. So, I'm biased as to the programming that we're doing, so, again, thought it would be best to bring an external person in to take a look at it. So, again, the, the, the purpose is to conduct a review of the district's programs and services for students with disability. And again, take a look, uh, have the ability to talk with stakeholders, so, um, they met with, um, parents, they met with, um, staff members, both general ed, regular ed, um, did a lot of focus groups, interviews, and observations of programs. Um, as well as full, um, review of all of the material that we have that describes, uh, the programming that we do for kids. So, back when I started this process, um, at the end of, of the school year last year, what my homework was until we actually put pieces into place was to say, alright, what are the focus areas? What are the things that I really want them to commit and take a look at? So, I've highlighted those here. It's whether or not our students truly have access to grade-level curriculum, the effectiveness and efficiency of our current staffing pattern, the alignment of our programs, which I know we've talked a lot about, collaboration between special education staff and parents, and academic, social, emotional, and behavioral support. So, I, I jumped the gun a little bit, so this slide is saying, you know, this is the data they collected, so they took a look at our policies, procedures, program descriptions, the, uh, the staffing patterns that we had. They did staff administrator and parent interviews, as well as focus groups, classroom observations, and a parent survey. So, there's the feedback. So, uh, how I, I, I know people have had a chance to look at the presentation briefly. So, what I really tried to do was take a look at what were our five essential questions, put those out for you. Then did a slide that discusses what they got for feedback, and then the recommendations based upon that feedback. So, the first question, are students with disabilities at Georgetown Public Schools given full access to grade-level curriculum through the continual services offered?
Jack, could you stop for just a minute? I just wanna, maybe this would be a good time for you to talk about the status of the actual report. 'Cause what you're doing is you're pulling from the report. Maybe you could talk about that.
So, um, when, when we first contracted with, with Walker, the, the ideal was that towards, um, maybe right before the Thanksgiving break, we were looking to have people come in and, and, um, do this work. And then with the goal of having a report by the end of the calendar year. So, we got a little bit behind in that process. Um, they came in the beginning of December. And I let them know that I was gonna be presenting at, at the school committee, and that I needed to at least have the basic information prepared so that I'd be able to do this tonight. So.
What caused the, um, what caused it to?
The scheduling.
Yeah.
Yeah, honestly, just that, you know, it was, it was like a two-week delay of what we originally planned. So, it wasn't like this huge timeframe, but.
But then you have the holidays in there, do you know what I mean? So, that, that gets a little wonky, yeah.
So, you know, I've been, um, meeting with those two people on a regular basis. In fact, had a, a conference call with them even today just to sort of talk about the status of that report. And, um, they were able to give me what I believe was the important information in order to present tonight. And then I've been told that I should have a final draft of the report by, uh, mid-next week.
Okay, and we'll see that.
Oh, definitely.
Yes, you'll get the whole report.
Yeah, I mean, um, my plan is to be as transparent as possible.
Sure.
Put that, you know, I, uh, I don't know how often anyone looks at my website, but, you know, when I get those types of reports, they immediately go up on the website, and that's the plan with this one as well.
Great.
So, this is basically a summary of the, of the general information.
Of the report that we don't have yet.
That, that, that's from, coming from the draft.
Yeah.
Jack did get an opportunity, and I know I read the draft as well, and there were some, you know, things that were off on the actual number of staff, and there were a few, you know, things that were inaccurate, right? So, they don't, they didn't want us to distribute a report until it was final. But we had promised people we were gonna do it tonight, so we.
Can I back this up for a second?
Sure.
What was the whole purpose, I, I might've missed that, the whole purpose of this Walker group coming in? Was it something that you asked for, and what was the reason?
Yes, we solicited it.
But what was the reason for asking for it?
Because we hadn't had an outside evaluation in a while, and Jack is, Jack is, was entering his third year. In our strategic plan, you know, we've been talking about, you know, the Pembroke Project and, and the Pembroke Action Plan, which ties into special education there, but we had really had a district focus on this.
But it wasn't a poor review from?
No, 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 no. It was really, you know, uh, like Jack said, he wanted to make sure that we were going in the right direction. So, it was an opportunity for staff to be interviewed at all levels, all kinds of staff, right? The parents had an opportunity and a couple of sessions to do it, plus there was a parent survey that went out, so parents had some opportunity if they couldn't come to, you know, do that, talk to administrators. I know I was in a focus group. So, I think it was really just to give us more information, so as we're going forward planning.
So, it's more proactive, reactive?
It's more proactive than reactive. I think that's true.
Okay.
Right, again, um, all districts are required every six years to do some type of program review. Again, just based on where we were within this process, I think it made sense for us to look at an external company to provide that service for us.
Yeah, sometimes you can't be, you know, the people don't perceive that you're able to look constructively at your own.
Jack, how much did this cost?
I think it was around seventy-five hundred, is that? I'm pretty sure. It was, eh, within that ballpark range. Um, and they were here for, uh, two full days. And then in addition to that, um, you know, all the reviews of, uh, they did some student file reviews that, with names redacted, obviously, and, uh, looked at our policies and procedures.
And they had to write the report, right?
Is that helpful, Suzanne?
Yeah. Okay.
Now, question number one.
Question number one, again, this is around the access to grade-level curriculum. So, um, the general feedback across the board from the administration, from, uh, teachers and from parents was that people felt generally good about this move towards inclusive programming, and, um, what was really nice for me to see was, um, teachers were already able to talk about some anecdotal data of, of how well kids are doing within this new environment. So, um, that, that was really beneficial for me and, and for my team here to, to get some feedback that, yeah, that, that general move was the right one for this district. But that being said, we need to provide more training and discussion about what infected, effective inclusion looks like. We need to do, um, more, uh, progress monitoring data. I, I know I talked about it to, to this group before, that, uh, in the elementary school this year, we started the, the general education, uh, teachers do progress monitoring for their, their kids all along, but other than, um, when we report on the goals and objectives of the IEP, special ed wasn't necessarily involved in that process here in Georgetown, so we did start that this year at, um, Pembroke School. And Margaret had a, a huge role in that. Um, she told me from the day I walked in the door here that that was something she wanted to do within the building, so we were able to get that rolling this year. We already have, um, had discussions between Dan, Margaret, and myself about what we can do to bring that up into the, uh, middle high school. It's really more identifying what those tools will be to, to be able to do the progress monitoring at that level.
Now, would that involve new assessments, or is that just a, a new way of recording?
So, I think it, it's looking at what, what do we have currently for resources to do those assessments? Will those, uh, resources be successful in obtaining the data that we're really looking for? And if not, it could involve researching different assessment.
To measure success and measure the effectiveness of the approach you're taking, okay.
So, a, a lot of the tools that we use in the elementary school, they were all existing pieces, like we use Fanta's and Pennell. We, we use Dibbles and those types of things, but we've taken a much stronger look at the special education students for those processes. And, you know, there is no, there's no Fanta's and Pennell at the middle high school level.
No, right.
So, it's, it's determining what we're gonna.
Nor should there be, but what are those assessments that?
But at those, yeah, elementary levels, those younger levels, now you're able to dive into that data and take the, get access to that data.
Right.
Well, you have a student assistance team, uh, I'm not sure what you call it there, but a student assistance team where that's also a way of progress monitoring for kids that, for whatever reason, are showing that they're having, um, difficulties, right? Where you can sit together and say, well, what do we know about this child?
Well, but that process is, is for students that haven't been identified yet.
Oh, so you only use it for that? So, you don't, okay, that's a pro, right, okay, all right.
So, and, and I think that was part of the disconnect.
Yeah.
Is, you know, we collect all that data before we make decisions as to whether or not.
Do to make sure.
But then what, right, exactly. How are we then monitoring, are we doing the right thing by kids with the services that we're providing?
Makes sense, yeah.
Staff, uh, were, were very reflective and talked about differentiation being an area that they can make improvements in.
And that's been in our district improvement plan, so it's consistent, again, with what we, what we're planning on doing.
And that scheduling is a barrier to student access. We know that, um, you know, when students do need to be removed from the classroom for certain reasons, it, it's impacting their entire day, right? So, when do we take them out? You know, we don't want them to miss special classes, and, um, scheduling for service delivery blocks at the middle high school, um, I think has always sort of been a challenge because you only have certain blocks during the day when special ed is sort of, um, has access to those students because, uh, one block might be ELA across the board, that all kids are, you know, the middle school getting.
Or sort of the middle school.
Yeah. So, that was identified by staff as an issue. So, um, the recommendations for that particular question, uh, were really around professional development and the direction that we need to be going in as a district. So, differentiated instruction, and again, fortunate for us, these are all things we know and we have in our, in our plan already. Universal design for learning, uh, co-teaching strategies, and that, that's really the big one. Inclusive collaboration and, and continued progress monitoring. So, and, and, uh, all of those are in our district improvement plan.
Are, are you optimistic about the improved scheduling? Because I know that's been a issue for.
Add more time onto the day, there were.
I mean, I just, you know, I've heard it for, uh, for a while, and so I'm just hopeful.
Yeah, so.
Is it, yeah. Is there a room, realistic room for improvement?
Well, I think one, one of the pieces that helped us out a lot this year was, and I talked about it here, was the pre-placement process, so that we were able to, to get our students into the classes that we were able to provide the most support in.
Yes.
And now, in particular, at the middle high school, kids have scheduled changes for various reasons. So, the best-laid plans get a little, um, fuzzy when those things happen.
And they have to earn credits, right, so they have to take certain classes that are only offered certain periods. It, it is complicated.
Yeah, I'm sure. I have no doubt, yeah.
So, you know, I, I don't wanna speak for Principal Richards. My guess is he's not looking to make huge changes to the schedule yet.
Uh, of the lower, the younger grades at Pembroke.
So, I think, um, again, I think we've made a lot of progress in that area, and we have some anecdotal data to back that up. But we really won't know the success until the following year, right, to see, uh, those pieces that we put in place really were effective through, you know, results of end-of-the-year testing from MCAS results that we'll get, those types of things.
Thanks.
So, question two was around the staffing, and do we have, uh, the appropriate amount of staff for the various needs of our students? And the feedback was observation, so, um, I had the, the observer really rocking and rolling on the two days she was here. She saw a lot of stuff in, in a relatively short period of time, so she had opportunities. The two days, one day was at, uh, Curly and Pembroke, and one was at the middle high school. So, she was able to see both, uh, inclusive programming, she was able to see pull-out programming. She got observations of all the program, the district programs, um, as part of that. So, she was busy, um, and overall, the, the observations showed that general and special education teachers are working well collaboratively, and, and some of the feedback, uh, that teachers gave was certainly what I would've expected, that, again, having that second adult in the classroom goes a long way. They're still not a hundred percent sure how to work together, like that, that, but they're learning that on the job a, as well, and that, um, the overall, uh, feeling from staff is that this is a better scenario than the one that we had previously. Observations of study skill classes at, at both the middle school and the high school were that they really are highly effective. That kids are getting a lot of one-to-one support within those settings, um, that's setting them up for success when they enter the classroom. There was, um, again, based on the observation, there was a good amount of pre-teaching, um, as well as review that happened within those sessions. So, I was very pleased to hear that. I know that there's been some questions around that model, um, and based on this observation, you know, it's a, it's one snapshot in time, but.
I was very happy to read that. I, I highlighted that right away. That's good.
Felt very strongly about the study skills classes, yeah. From, uh, both staff and from parents, that, uh, people are generally very happy with the new hires, particularly with the paraprofessional staff, and, uh, was commented on multiple occasions that we have an excellent paraprofessional staff that's, that's very highly trained and qualified, so.
And Jack, do you do hiring for that?
Um, do I personally?
Or is it the, or is it the principals?
I, we do a lot of it collaboratively. You know, uh, under Principal Lucia, I tended with Chris to do the vast majority of that, whereas, um, Margaret and I were always, uh, with Caitlin together with that, so. And that, um, staffing is within typical ranges. I think, you know, educators always, you know, felt that, sure, it'd be great to have another person, you know, but that, things were, were pretty well. There, there was a distinct difference, though, between what parents felt and what teachers felt as far as staffing went, that parents specifically, you know, were very strong in saying that they didn't feel that we had, uh, the correct amount of staff in order to manage, uh, the vast range of disabilities. Now, again, they felt that the staffing that we did have was, um, highly trained and, and effective, but felt that we needed more.
Is that a function of, and this is trying to sort of read into the survey and, or the results. Is that a function of perception of my student isn't, might not be doing well, or, or doing as well as I want him or her to be doing? And sort of projecting that that's because of a staffing issue, or i- is that a perception thing? 'Cause it's, it's one thing to say, we're in line with, with surrounding towns on where we should be on staffing. It's another for parents who are actually using the services to agree or not. As they're the ones who, who are, they and their students are the ones who are feeling, you know, they're, they're feeling the, the effects of that staffing.
So, I, I would argue.
Questions that were asked on the survey, I guess maybe that would help answer that, 'cause it, I think it was asking for people's perceptions.
Okay.
Yeah, so, so the survey questions, which you will, you'll see the actual questions when the report, uh, comes out, were, were fairly general. So, it was more, um, do you think that there are enough staff? You, you know what I mean? It wa, it wasn't like specific to, in the Compass Program at the elementary school, do you feel? It was much more general than that.
Could they put in any comments, like where they're?
There was room for comments, but there were minimal comments from the survey.
That it was a Likert scale, so, uh, I strongly agree, agree. Neutral, I think, was one, and then it was, str, agree, disagree, and strongly disagree.
But was it pretty much like the majority, like, are we saying the large majority of parents felt that way?
Thirty percent.
How much?
Thirty percent on average. Thirty percent felt, uh, disagreed.
And how many?
On some questions, I mean.
So, we had approximately forty, forty people.
I'd say, we're about forty people.
So, I was happy with that number. I think, um, you know, they tell you on surveys, you're gonna get ten percent, and so.
So, how many special education families do we have?
So, forty out of how many?
So, I, I can give you number of students, family, 'cause some may have multiple, but it's, you know, somewhere between like two thirty-five and two fifty on any given day, it, you know, it can change.
So, that, that's students. Special education students.
Students.
Right. So, you know, forty is close to twenty percent responded, so I think, you know, I was pleased with, with that, you know, I, again, I don't know how, how much you've read into the, the presentation, I'm obviously, um, feeling like we have a lot of work to do with families to, um, help them, um, feel like they're more of a part of, of our process. I think we still have a lot of work to do in that area. Um, and, you know, for me, I think the, the challenge is, I, I've talked to this committee on several occasions about my goal is to, to really look to change culture and, and try to bring people in. So, I haven't been a, as successful as I'd like to be in that area, um, but I, I hope I have some ideas as to how I'm gonna improve that with, with families, so. And that, to me, um, we got a ton of information from this report, but that's the biggest takeaway for me, is that's an area that I need to do some more work in.
Do you think that you have the ability to do it with the time constraints that we, do you think it's doable to, with all the other things that you're required to do to, to, to how the parents, you know, would be satisfied?
Well, Jack can't do it alone.
Well, that's what I mean, so.
You can do it alone. It's really a, so I, these guys are here.
You know, I, I, I hear, a, as I talk to colleagues about some of the responses from this report, it's like, you know, you hear like, oh, well, you know, you're only getting the, the grumpy people that are responding, and, you know, my response to that is if I have one upset family, I'm not doing my job, right? So, when it's closer to thirty, that, that's too many, that, you know, so. So I need to really start to get down and dirty with what, what really are the issues here? What are the things that have you the most upset? Because again, the, so information from the focus groups in the survey were a little different in that when, when people actually met with the consultant, there was a, a really good cross-section of, these are things I'm concerned with, and these are things that are going well. On the survey, it was really like, we're concerned with this. You know? So, and I think anonymity plays a little role in that, you know, that people, I think, sometimes feel more free to be honest when they're not put on the spot. So, again, that being said, I worry a little more, because, again, our, our goal is that people feel like we're doing best by their kids.
Do we know, as far as the survey, do we know if it was like one survey per household?
So there was actually no, there was no limit. So I could, I could have gone in and, and done the survey, and I could have done it 500 times if, if that's what I chose to do. But, you know, if that were the case, and a parent felt like they needed to go in there and, and say 10 times how much I hate this place, you know, like, that's, that's obviously an issue, so.
They felt that, yeah.
So either, either way, you know, regardless, I, I think it's, it's good information for us to move forward and say, all right, I, I need to develop some structure so that parents feel that they're a much bigger part of the process, and that we partner with them in that process.
So already, they, you know, these guys have met. Jack's met with the administrators. We talked about it, administrative team. I know there's plans to talk about it with CPAC, you know? So those are things that were done sort of immediately. So certainly no one took it lightly, you know? We absolutely know that there are strategies from the people who work with the kids every day, to Jack, to, to me, to anybody, that we all need to work on communication. Because special ed parents sometimes just want to be reassured, and maybe we're not, you know, we're not doing that as much as we need to be, you know? Maybe there's, we just need to hear from the people who are concerned, you know, what, what is concerning you, right? Right now, we just have the information that it's concerning, but we don't, we got to dig down deeper, and we've got to make some adjustments. You know, it's, oftentimes, it's communication.
So, you know.
How our child is doing and.
And starting to do that.
Progress they're making and, you know, effective measurements.
And just want to know that you care about their child, right?
Yes.
And that even if they have issues or challenges, there's lots of strengths they have, you know? And when we're talking about, you know, what we need to work on, you know, that's in the context of, you know, special ed only means that you learn differently, you might need a different structure, a different way. Doesn't mean you can't learn. It doesn't mean you won't learn, right? It doesn't have to be a deficit. It can be, it always should be building on strengths. And so it's just, you know, it's just making sure we all have the mindset. And so then the messages we send are consistent with our mindset, right? Because sometimes we can always get a little bit, you know, into our, we're the experts, you know? We're just trying to help you by telling you these things about your children, but sometimes it's hard to hear that message. And parents, you know, we're not in their shoes, so we need to, we have empathy, and we need to, you know, find, find ways to connect. And maybe we just need to do that more than we currently do, right? So I think it's, it's making us think, it's making us, you know, investigate a little further, and that's all, that's what the whole purpose of these reports and these processes are about. We, we, it's not about, you know, checking the box, grant stamp of approval, you know, people are happy with this. It's really about, what are we learning from this?
And that's what you, you know, use consultants for, is to give you new ideas to move forward for continuous improvement and to build relationships and, yeah. And this is a lot of great ideas.
In some of the recent conversations that I've had with parents, sort of, you know, as a result of this, isn't necessarily that we're not communicating enough.
Yeah.
You, you tend to think that, like, oh, all right, what can we do to communicate more? It's really not necessarily that. It's, are we communicating the things that the parents really want to know? You know, and.
Good point.
My, my message to staff is, I know how hard you're working, and I, and I know how much effort you're putting into that communication piece, but it's just like, you know, we, when we provide services to our students, we look individually at what they need. Well, let's start to think about, as we build relationships with families, what is it that this parent needs from the communication aspect? So I may have one parent who just wants hard BCBA data, who wants to know, you know, what are the percentages of the time that my kid's doing this during the day? And you may have another parent who just wants to know that their kid played at recess, you know?
Or made a new friend.
So, they made a friend. So it, it, it's really just making a stronger effort to get to know our families a little bit better and provide them with what they're looking for. And hopefully, that actually results in less work for teachers, because they're not spinning their wheels, saying, oh my God, I communicate with this parent every day, and they're still unhappy, you know? Because it, it's not necessarily the amount of time, it's the feedback that you're giving.
So the parents that were, that participated in the survey, they were, you knew?
No.
The school? The, the?
No.
No, we knew nothing.
So not even the school?
That's another flaw.
Okay, yeah, because I'd like to, I would have liked to have known it, you know, is it more, you know?
Yeah, and some of it, with some of the few comments that there were, you are able to sort of distinguish that piece. And certainly in the focus groups, it was very clear, because we separated it. So we know from that feedback from parents, what, you know, that they were talking about either the, the middle high school, or they were talking about Pearlie and Penbrook.
Did you have just as many, like, parents from both schools that wanted to participate in the focus groups?
So, you know, timing is always an issue.
Yeah.
I only had them for two days to come in, and had to schedule several different observations in focus groups, blah, blah, blah. So timing wasn't great for families, right? Because, let's face it, most of us work nowadays, so to come in the middle of school day is challenging. Because initially, there, there was not a plan to have a survey, but parents responded to me very appropriately, saying, you know, I can't make the focus group, but I want to be able to participate. So although not, not necessarily the best way to get their feedback, but a way to get some feedback from families that couldn't attend. You know, and you don't want to have 50 people in a focus group either, right? So, you know, we sort of limited it to eight or so people to attend.
Did we manage the survey, or is that Walker that, that actually?
Walker managed the survey. We worked collaboratively to develop the questions, but I didn't get that data. The data went to them, and they provided it to me.
But to, to the point that Jack made earlier, I mean, as scientific as it probably wasn't, you know, the idea was that it wasn't just five people. It represented, you know, this, you know, a significant number. And so we're just looking at the feedback, at least initially, as to what are the cogent points we take away, and what are some of the things we need to find more information about? So it's kind of where, where we are with that.
So this question was about staffing, and we, we sort of got way off. So when you look at the recommendations, they're going to go back to staffing. So one piece that came out was around turnover. People recall when I, my first year here, I think all I did was hire for the first three months. So that, you know, there's been a little bit of turnover. So one of the recommendations is that we really analyze that and come up with some decisions as to why that, that's happening. Common planning time, because I started to talk a little bit about, in answer to your question, Michael, that it's not, to me, it's not necessarily the, the number of staff that you have, it's having the right staff who are knowledgeable of, you know, not only the students that they work with, but, you know, all the disability categories, the runnings of the school, you know? All of those things are so vital. So one of their recommendations was looking to include paraprofessionals in some of the common planning time. Quite honestly, that I've had that in everywhere that I've worked, but that's a real struggle to be able to do that.
Because they're usually covering with the kids.
Right, right. It's sort of one of those, if they're in a meeting, who's watching the kids? But I think we need to really look at that and try to at least find some, even if it's, you know, 15 minutes a week, it's better than no minutes a week. Looking at the development of interdisciplinary teams, so again, that you would have, this wouldn't just relate to special education, it would also be looking at specific content area teachers being more of a part of that team. And a focus, they, so the people from Walker felt that our autism programs were extremely well-staffed, in fact, possibly a little overkill, and that some of those resources should be more allocated to students with social and emotional disabilities, because we know that's a growing population. And, you know, it, it's one of those, our autism program tends to be extremely strong within the district. We've had a lot of success within that program. And I think every school will tell you they're struggling a little bit more with, with kids that have social, emotional needs, so sort of taking a look at that. Question three talks about program alignment, appropriate criteria in place to ensure services and supports for our students. When they talked about transition meetings, staff felt really good about some of the work that we're doing building to building. So when we meet on kids that are going from Pearlie to Penbrook, Penbrook to the middle school, the middle school to the high school, staff feel that, that those transitions are really solid for kids, that we have good things in place, but we need to do a little bit more work grade to grade. Elementary staff talked about not necessarily having enough knowledge about the programming at the middle school, and, and felt that they could use some education in that area, and the same was true for middle school staff, to know a little bit more about what's happening in the elementary school so that they can appropriately plan for kids. And looking at IEP benchmarks to be written to align with the next school placement. And that's something I can say we have been working on in the past couple of years. So the recommendations from that are, again, take another look at our program descriptions, which, again, for, for me, we recognize that, that's part of the district improvement plan as it is, and actually, our goals, the three of us, for, for the coming year, to work on those, those program descriptions, taking a look at our procedure manual, and, and just really updating that to make sure that everything, you know, we're, we're looking at entrance and exit criteria into our programs, and of course, the approaches to progress monitoring. Sort of surprising, but, but good data to have is, there was a lot of talk about students that are on 504 plans, and from parents questioning why we don't do the same type of transition planning for those students as we do for students who are on IEPs. So I think that's something we can take a, a good look at, too, and see how we can manage that.
At age 14, about 504s, so.
Right, no, I mean, at age 14, the transition.
So, no, this is a, so this is a little bit different from that.
From grade to grade or grade to grade.
So this is more looking at within the, within the district, what we're doing to move kids from grade to grade and building to building. Whereas what, what you're referring to is that transition from school to adulthood.
Right, right. Okay, yeah. Jack, can you just take a, a moment to differentiate between the 504 and an IEP?
So in order to be eligible for either plan, you have to have a documented disability. The, the main difference is that on a 504 plan, it's an accommodation plan. So it's sort of about evening the playing field, if you will, so that we're going to provide a student with these accommodations to their program, so that they'll have the same access that all other kids will have. Whereas when you put students on an IEP, not only do you have those accommodations, but you may also have modifications to programming. So when you're actually changing the program, so it's different from what other students are getting, and you also write goals and objectives within an IEP that is not part. So there's no expectation of progress, if you will, on a 504 plan, whereas on an IEP, that's why you're writing those goals and objectives, because it is expected that you're going to make progress with that student.
Okay. It has to affect a significant life function, right?
That's the 504.
Yeah, so sometimes it can be just a physical thing.
Right.
So I broke my leg, and so there's accommodations that, you know, people need to make for me so I can get to class, right? But then ADD sometimes be considered, you know, essential life fun, it affects essential life function. So again, like Jack said, it's accommodations. We're, we're going to check in with the student before, at the end of class, to make sure they know what their homework is, or, you know, we're going to break the tasks down, or there's going to be a study guide, or something like that. Those, those are accommodations. So that, that is, but a lot of people get confused, because 504, if, if they're not eligible for an IEP, sometimes people think, well, then we'll just write a 504 for them. But that's, that's not how it's supposed to work. There's two distinctly different processes, right? You may say, well, let's look at a 504, but then you really need to convene the 504. It's a regular ed intervention as opposed to a special education intervention. That's, that's another significant, and the accountability for teachers is different in the sense that if you have a IEP, then you're following, you know, as long as you're following the IEP, you know, that you're sort of protected under the district umbrella. If you have a 504, and you just choose not to, to do those accommodations, then you're in trouble with the Office of Civil Rights, and you can get into personal, individual trouble as a teacher for not doing that. So it, it's a little, it's a little different.
So the children, the students that are on a 504, are they under the population of special ed students?
Regular ed.
Okay. So it's regular ed, and they just have a 504? Right, because if you break your leg and you're on a 504, that's right.
It's a modification. I think that's the, what Jack just said is really important, that it's the difference between an accommodation and a modification.
Well, and typically, folks with learning disabilities are on IEPs, where, again, a lot of 504s are medical.
Medical.
You know, or.
Study skills, you know.
Executive function.
Executive function, yeah.
So when, when we talk medical, we're also, you know, ADHD, anxiety.
Yes.
Those types of things, right? Now, I, I also want to say, if, if we're doing an eligibility meeting for special ed for a student, and we determine ineligible, but based on what the related service providers found in testing, they, they give recommendations which may include some accommodations. So we would obviously provide that to, at Penbrook, it's Hope that's responsible for that, and the guidance department at the middle high school. So we would provide them with that material and say, you know, basically, you probably want to contact the parent to look at putting something in place.
Okay. There, we have a lot of accommodations that we make for children that are not a written 504, correct?
Oh, of course, right.
So oftentimes, like Jack said, coming out of that meeting would be recommendations, but, you know, the classroom teachers would be responsible for implementing.
Right, well, and a lot of the accommodations are good differentiated teaching practices.
Yeah, for all kids.
For all kids.
Kids in the front seat, you know? Yeah, that kind of thing. Thank you, Jack. That was helpful.
So this was really the, the biggest question, is how can the special education staff form more positive collaboration with parents and families to gain stronger parent support and trust? So the feedback, again, I, I talked a little bit about this earlier, that there, there is a high level of parent and family engagement in Georgetown, that parents did comment that they've seen some good improvements in recent years on that. Sort of a surprise, or during focus groups, a lot of parents commented that actually the special education staff are communicating more than general ed staff, which, you know, to me, again, that, that's a fundamental flaw, because I, my, my guess is, if you asked a, a general education parent, you know, they wouldn't, they'd say, no, communication is fine. But I think what happens is, because we, we try to streamline it, so that it, the communication comes from one person, which tends to be the liaison, the special education liaison, that, you know, a flaw in that process is that parents aren't hearing from the general education teacher as much. So that, that's really good feedback that we need to take a look at.
That's interesting, yeah.
And again, around communication, that, a feeling that generally, parents felt that teachers' use of the portal is inconsistent, so when they go in to look for information, they may find that one teacher is really good about all, everything's there, and another teacher does it a little more sporadically. So it's, it's taking a look at what type of information is being put into that portal, and how can we be more consistent in the way that we deliver that information?
So that's still an issue, huh?
I think the regular ed parents would say the same thing, that, that that's still a frustration that they feel, and I don't know that there's a sol, I don't know if there's a solution to that. I mean, we've tried to say, as soon as there's.
As soon as something is graded, it's supposed to be put in.
But, but different, some people organize their classroom differently, where they don't, they don't grade every day, because they're, maybe they're doing a more project-based approach, that, so there's, there's not as much that, you know, individual grading. So that's what we, when we've looked into that, that's what we've found. Sometimes it's the nature of the class and the way the teacher does it. They don't necessarily do. They don't necessarily do quizzes and tests as often, or maybe they don't send home worksheets with the kids, you know, like a textbook exercise or something. They do stuff in class, so I don't think we're gonna have.
If the teacher has to, if a parent has to reach out to a teacher.
Yeah.
Asking about their child's progress or how the child is doing. Up to a certain point, because there's nothing in portal, there's a problem.
If if there's nothing in there and it's like halfway through the quarter, I will, I would definitely agree with you. I I think it's just hard to find, you know, because your expectation as a parent might be different than Pam's, right? You know, and so I think we're just, we just have to keep working on it. I I definitely agree that, this didn't surprise me at all, because we consistently hear it, you know, not as much as we used to, but we.
It did surprise me when I saw it because we were hearing it and then all of a sudden it seems to, it seems not to be a hot topic. But I'm hoping that the reason why we're not hearing it is because people are just throwing up their hands saying, you know what, it's not changing.
Well, we we hope that's not the case, but we don't know that that's not the case.
Well, like in respecting teachers, different teaching styles.
That's what I'm trying to say.
I would hope that if they're not using the portal, that they're communicating in a different way. Or as to why it's not because there's a long-term project that has multiple pieces or.
I know, but if they're communicating with the student and say the student isn't communicating that information to the parent, that's all purpose of the portal.
Right.
So the parent is just as.
It's the parent portal.
Yeah, the parent is is just as informed as the student.
Right, or if the teacher could communicate in a different way, not through their child, but.
I I think the conversation we're having is exactly why it's a problem, right? Because there's just a lot of different expectations, right? So we we first, our expectation, remember, was every two weeks, you have to have something in there every fourteen days. And then people said, that's not enough because now my child had a quiz and the teacher didn't post it, so I couldn't help my child get ready for the test. So we've we've heard a lot from parents on this topic and we will continue to work on it. I mean, we worked with the union as part of the negotiations to basically say, as soon as you have a grade to post, please post it. Right, but what the teachers will say is, well, if I've got a project that the kids are working on and it's, you know, a three-week project. And really, they're just working on the project, you know, I I might be checking in to see if Cheryl's on task, but there's nothing to grade.
Right, but you would hope that if it was something like that and say, you know, Johnny's not, you know, up to where he should be at that time.
Well, that would be different, right.
Something should be, you know, communicated.
Right, so so it inconsistent is not.
But I know that, you know, kids will say, oh, no, that, you know, that teacher doesn't, doesn't, you know, do it. I I hear this, you know, the same teachers that they say, oh, yeah, no, they're not as as good as, say, this one. But bottom line is they need to, because this is a.
It's a communication.
It's a communication tool, one we pay for, one we we want the parents, you know, we want the parents to know what's going on.
A lot of positive benefits from it when it's working. Yeah, and it is working much better than it than when we didn't have it. Because I remember parents would say to me, you know, how can my child, you know, the report card comes home, how can they be getting a D? And I never heard from the teacher, right? So.
Well, progress reports still go out.
But when the progress reports went out, let's say the progress report was the kid's getting a B, but then by the time the grade comes in, it's a D. And that's, the parents weren't expecting that.
We don't like surprises, we don't like surprises on this committee, I don't like surprises in my family.
I don't, you know, I'm not good with surprises. We, you know, we're taking the feedback and continuing to work on it with teachers for sure. And the union, when we've talked to them about it, they've said, you know, we agree with you and, you know, deal with the teacher. If if you know that it's happening, deal with the teacher and, you know, we'll back you up because, you know, we we agree with you that it's a, that it's a tool. And that as soon as grades are available and feedback should be consistent enough so that everybody's on the same page. But it goes to the the umbrella problem of communication, right? The way we talked about that at the beginning.
Does the portal start in sixth grade?
Uh, sixth.
Sixth, okay.
We have had discussions about putting it in fourth, but, uh, sorry, fifth, but we haven't got there.
It's also frustrating for the students too, because I have a teacher that hasn't posted anything this quarter and midterms are in two weeks. And I don't know what my grade is.
You don't know what your grade is.
It'd be nice to know, and like also homeworks, like if you're out, most of them won't post it on the portal, that I have to, I'll just contact my friends, but, I mean.
So you said it's not posted on the portal.
Who's in charge of the teachers making sure?
Policing that, yeah.
Yeah, who's policing that, that's a good word.
Well, the administration is responsible for it, but, you know, I mean, we do give them a lot of tasks to do. I don't think you, we want to have them spending their time every day looking at the portal.
So it's pretty much different.
Generally, what happens is, because it's a shared responsibility, if it's not working for you, then it is important that you bring it to the teacher's attention, right? And if that still doesn't work, because I know sometimes that can be a little wonky, especially if they're a student, right? It's kind of hard to say to the teacher, hey, you know, can you, like, post? But, you know, if parents bring it, bring it up, believe me, it gets looked into immediately. But.
And and proactive use of the portal, like you were saying, to post homework ahead of time is, so I know we have some teachers that do it really, really well.
Yes, there are.
It would be helpful if more teachers did.
I mean, we've had teachers present, you know, at faculty meeting, you know, share, you know, what, how they do it, because there are some that are really, really good.
Yes.
And, you know, I think, again, that's a rare situation for you, right, Chloe? You don't see that happen most of the time. But when it does, it's frustrating, right? And so then the question you're raising is, well, what do you do about that? You know, does a student, do the student say, hey, you know, I'm just curious about my grade, there's nothing posted? But you know you've had assignments, right?
Oh, yeah, many test conclusions.
So see, that would, so that would we would need to know about so that we could do something about that.
I haven't gotten anything back or posted.
And how do you feel in terms of like reaching out to the teacher yourself and saying, hey, I just want an idea or?
I mean, I feel comfortable with it, like, I don't feel like I'm in jeopardy anywhere with my grade, but like, I, it'd be nice to know, especially because midterms are coming up. But most teachers that I have post, like, right when they grade it.
Right, that's, that's the goal.
Teachers are fast about grading it. It also depends on the subject too, like especially like English.
Like with a paper.
Yeah, I mean, I have Mr. Murphy and he's pretty good about grading everything, but like when we have a paper, he'll take a little longer to grade it. And obviously, like, I mean, it's a paper and he has to grade like fifteen, so.
So you're getting, even in the class that's not posting, you're getting feedback, are you not, when the, whatever the assignments are come back to you? So when you say you're not in jeopardy, I'm assuming you know that because you're getting feedback?
Well.
When you get the assignment back or no?
The class that I have, that, we grade it right after we take it, like Scantron, and then we look over, like, we grade it ourselves. And then that teacher, like, grades it, him or herself too.
Okay.
And so, so I know that.
Maybe they're just not posting it.
Yeah, so I don't know the exact grade I got on it, but.
So we should, we should, that's the kind of thing that through parents, through students, you know, the administration should know about. Not to get anybody in any trouble, because like you said, most of the people are complying and doing a really good job. But in that case, we'd at least want to talk to the teacher and and get an explanation as to why. And reiterate again that the expectation is, in the contract, is as soon as you have grades available, they get posted, so.
So as you can see, this is a general ed as well as a special education concern.
I'm not, but I'm not surprised to see it.
So then, you know, the the last one is the big one, that there's still this this general mistrust from parents. You know, a lot of the comments I think are, that that I got to see were some parents that are are still grieving some decisions that may have been made previously, years ago. And and feeling like, you know, if these decisions were made, then how can we trust these three people? That you are you are gonna now make those good decisions for my kids? So again, I think it's just, that's a lot of public relations for for me, you know, to to be as visible as I can, you know, in the schools and the community. And be available for for parents to bounce things off.
And we all know you change behaviors before you change attitudes. So it takes time sometimes for people to to see it, to believe it, you know, that's, that's a reality.
Was that actually a question? Like, do you trust the school district or was that just on comments?
So that was from comments, so the overall, the overarching question was, you know, are you satisfied, not exact words, but are you satisfied with the communication? Between school district and parent? And again, based on that, you know, strongly agree, agree, neutral, disagree, strongly disagree.
Yeah. Yeah, that was hard to to see, yeah.
Yeah, yeah, but, you know, to a certain degree, I think I I expected some of that, that's why I asked the question, right? Because I expected some of that to come out, you know, when, when you get, you know, you're in, parents in the numbers of thirties that are coming back and saying, no, you know, we still have some pretty major concerns here. Like I, yeah, I gotta get my act together and work on that a little bit, you know.
And it is hard for the staff to hear when they get that feedback, because, you know, some of the staff really feel like they really communicate well and they, you know, they have great relationships. So it's, you can't really, you can't really paint the broad brush. But at the same time, it's just feedback, right? So we all got to figure out what we own of it and that we can all get better, right? We always talk about it, continuous improvement, we can all get better.
Well, again, I think it's it's taking a look at the way that that we're operating. So again, it's not that people aren't working hard and and making all of those efforts, it's are we spinning our wheels in the right direction? And and how can we actually make it easier for teachers to give parents what they feel they need to be involved in their child's education?
Yes.
And taking less time to do it because you're actually giving the the appropriate information.
Well, and I think your point too about folks grieving past, you know, it's hard to forget. And to build that trust again, so it's a process, you know.
It is.
But again, I, again, I think that the good news is, you know, we knew some of that was going to come out in this. And and now it's working on an action plan to to get better at it. So, you know, their recommendations will be that we we really need to work to effectively engage families as partners, like that, to me, that's the big word. And helping them feel that way, that, you know, we can say, oh, we do this and we, but we have to make sure that that parents have the perceptiveness. That they are partners in this process and that's where the work is going to come in. Continue to look at school climate again, I I think that that's something we've all been working really hard on. And then providing training to help parents access the portal. And then the last question was around, you know, really the basic.
Just go back to that last one, though, that provide the training to the parents.
So some of it was, I I misspoke a little bit. So some of the the questions that parents had were really like, I I can't even get in there. You know, so as far as, yeah, some, right, some of it was, you know, I'm not, teachers aren't reporting it the way they should be. Another part was, yeah, you know, someone showed me how to do it, but I'm not the most technically savvy person around, I can't even get in the system.
I know it does a lot more than, I just pretty much go in and look at the.
Yes.
But there is a lot of information that you can get out there. And it's the students that tell you, you know?
Yeah.
My kids will will tell me.
You know, for something like that, you know that if we said, oh, we're gonna do a training for parents to come in, like, you're not gonna get anyone to come. But I do think that, you know, maybe creating some type of webinar, you know, something that that we can send out to people is probably the better way.
Colin will do a webinar.
He loves that.
He's our resident pro.
Words, other people.
Yeah, I think a webinar is a great idea.
If you ask Colin, he'll do it.
We'll do a podcast. We'll do a podcast, Colin. You didn't say yes yet.
Oh, of course.
So again, look, looking at what are those services for academic, social, emotional, and behavioral supports. It it was actually very surprising to me that feedback from from both parents and from teachers were that we're doing a lot of Wilson reading instruction with kids. And that that's causing kids to miss time in the classroom. So, you know, that that's a big dilemma for for me personally, because, you know, we we are obligated to make sure that we're we're providing that that direct instruction. Because again, teaching kids to read is the most important thing that we can do as a school, in my opinion. If you ask any kindergarten student why they go to school, I guarantee you a hundred percent of them will say to learn how to read. So, you know, and obviously, the the social, emotional impact of that for the student who then can't, you know, for whatever reason, doesn't learn how to read. So, you know, when we look at that instruction, I I think it's really important that that we provide that the most intensive instruction for kids. But also take another look at, all right, so what are the implications of of doing that? And how can we sort of find some middle ground there? Because I think, you know, the the same people who say, yeah, you know, the Wilson reading, like, it's pulling kids out of class, will also be the ones that say, man, this kid really needs some more direct reading instruction. You know, so sort of of how do we weigh that out and make sure that we're giving kids the best of both worlds?
But we have been talking about this for quite some time. Whether, it it's not to say that there aren't some children who need Wilson, but it can't be the default program to, you know, to determine what, you know, what we do to support kids. You know, that that's like in the world of tiered instruction, that's like a tier three instruction. That's very intense, it's usually one or two or three kids at the most, right? So the question is, you know, making sure we have really the, all that rich literacy instruction, you know, and, you know, interventions that aren't necessarily this prescriptive to start with, right? So that's, it's taking a lot of our resources because it tends to be, you know, a a program that's, you know, put on IEPs.
It's highly intensive and it tends to be one-to-one.
You know, I think what is happening here is it's not working for many of the kids, but it might be because it's not necessarily the right intervention, right? Maybe there are other things we could, we should and could be trying before we get to that point. And then those kids that really need it really get it. We also started earlier than third grade, which is kind of the recommendation is third grade and up. So I think it's been something we're we're continuing to work on. So it was interesting to me when they saw this, because we have been talking about this now for a while in terms of overall program.
Well, and and a positive piece of that too, another way to look at is, so you have parents that they're concerned at this level. But generally speaking, parents were pretty satisfied with the academics that we're providing for their kids. So you're sort of getting into the nitty-gritty a little bit with this, which again, is great information. But the other side of that is that, you know, overall.
And they want their kid in the classroom.
Right, people are, and they, right, and they want their kid in front of the core content teachers, so that that's really helpful. Again, overall, teachers felt that the the biggest area where students with disabilities aren't performing well is in writing. And that's part of our district action plan as well.
Remember who said this is the year we're working on writing? So we, some of this stuff we foresaw because we we agree with it, that's why I was happy to, like, happy to see it. I mean, I wasn't surprised to see it and I think it reinforces what we we were thinking.
Right, is there a writing component with Wilson or no?
More spelling.
Right, the the encoding piece.
So in.
Exhendence writing.
In, in like a a Wilson pull-out session, is that like an hour or does it vary?
I think, you know, it it varies from.
Forty-five minutes to an hour.
Because it's very, like, scripted.
Prescriptive.
But the question is, are, you know, would would some of those students be better with some of that time being spent, just more practice, actually engaged in the process of reading? Even if it wasn't at grade level, if it was just engaging with print? Because you only have so much time, right? So you have your classroom reading, which in some cases is above where the kids are able to perform, they just can't pick up the novel and read it fluently, right? And then, you know, they get, if they're getting pulled out for a good chunk of their reading time for Wilson and getting the scripted program, when do they get extra time to read? Those are the conversations that we're.
There's only so many hours in a day, that's the problem.
That's exactly right, so it's not that it's a bad intervention, it's just the question of, you know, is it the right intervention? For some of the students that we're noticing are not making the progress? And maybe we'd be getting a better value if we were giving kids additional time, reading at their level, engaging with print, building those skills. And then that's how they build their fluency, right? Because it isn't about, it is about learning to read, as Jack said. So it's, it's an ongoing conversation.
In the social, emotional realm, staff in the elementary felt really good about the addition of PBIS and second step. The professional development being offered across the district, but in particular, the the middle high school staff commented on, they they really like the SEL piece that we're we're doing with them this year. So that was great. One thing that I don't know a whole lot about, to be honest, but I I was surprised to hear teachers talk about, apparently there was the removal of a morning meeting in the upper elementary grades. One thing that I, I don't know a whole lot about, to be honest, but I, I was surprised to hear teachers talk about, uh, I, apparently there was the removal of a morning meeting in the upper elementary grades. They felt that that was a loss.
I'm not surprised to see that either, because that was the community building time of the day for a lot of, you know.
Did you say we were putting SEL into the middle schools and possibly the high school?
Well, that's, yes.
So that, so there's a committee developed that, uh, Principal Richards has developed called the SEL Squad. Is that the SEL Squad?
The Squad, yeah.
Um, that, that is working to determine, you know, what, what's gonna be the best fit for them within the school.
Because Second Step does transcend all the way out.
It does, yep, that's one of the things we'll look at, yep.
Okay, sure.
Um, and for parents overall felt that the therapists and guidance staff that we have are very strong, but I felt that there's not enough for all the kids that need access to them. So the recommendations, um, so they, they knew that we had school-wide initiatives regarding SEL, but felt strongly that there should be a, a district-wide SEL task force, which would include parents, students, administrators, and staff. Um, and then, uh, developing system-wide frameworks for universal design for learning, tiered systems of support, and collaborative problem solving. And again, those are certainly initiatives that we have in place and are part of the district strategic plan. And then a couple of things that, um, you know, weren't necessarily part of the process, but that they felt, um, we should really take a look at as a district were, to really continue to educate all stakeholders, parents, staff, on students with disabilities and, and, um, the value that they, that those students bring to our programming and, and really just getting everyone on board with that, which I think is a great recommendation, and then also to look at more opportunities for college prep, uh, classes for students with disabilities within the high school. That's that.
So when you say more college prep is, uh, tell me a little bit about that, like.
Level three, there's kids that take level three classes that aren't really, the curriculum isn't the level of the college prep. It's not the, rigor's not the rigor, the level of expectations, the pacing is sometimes not consistent with, you know, like, the kids who go into a, a general college prep class.
Okay, okay.
Because there are probably modifications that are made to the curriculum that make it more accessible to them. But what I think I take away from this is that parents want their children to be able to go to college, right? So, you know, they, they need to be building a transcript that shows, you know, college prep level classes, and they need their children to be, you know, able to meet those expectations, that, that's what I read in this.
And students with learning disabilities do go to college.
Of course they do, all the time.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Because more and more colleges are accepting IEPs and they're working with that, so.
Right, I mean, we have ninety percent or more usually of the kids who go to college, every single special education student, you know, with the exception of ones that have significant cognitive disabilities, right? You know, like maybe they're on alt-assessments and those things, they don't necessarily go to college, but every one of our special education kids graduates, with the disabilities graduates with an MCAS diploma, so I think they're just saying they wanna make sure the expectations are as rigorous as they can be for kids, like, that, that we don't want the expectations to be lowered because you're on an IEP.
Right, we don't wanna lower our expectations, I mean, kids with learning disabilities have very high IQs, it's not related.
That's right. And maybe we don't, but the perception is that we do.
Learning differences, the style, the way they take in the information, it's not their ability to learn and to delve deep into issues and be able to problem solve.
And, you know, I can honestly say in, in coming to this district, that piece that Carol just talked about was one of the most amazing things for me because it, it really does show the dedication of the staff that are working with those kids to ensure that they are getting an MCAS diploma. I, I, I can tell you that, uh, you know, it's only been a short period of time for me, but all of our students have passed the MCAS, every single one of them, and that does not happen in other districts.
I've been here twelve years and that's always happened.
Yeah, that, that's a very impressive statistic.
Not so much a question, I guess, I, I, my read on this, and I'm not a special education person, I guess I'm a little anxious, uh, there, there was a lot of, you know, it's about communications, and, and I don't doubt for a moment that, I mean, I think as a district, we've talked about how we're not necessarily communicating, you know, in ninth grade, don't go to private schools, stay at Georgetown because our programs are just as good and, and we can do it as good or better as, as the alternatives. It does feel like there is tangible stuff that people are concerned about. I just hope we don't say, well, we're just not communicating it, right?
No.
I, I think, I think the comments that I read, all the comments in here that were talking about staff were, the hires are great, the, the, the guidance and therapists are great, we just want more or different, or, you know, it's, it's, the people are good, the product isn't what we want. Sounds like more than just a communications question, and I guess I'm, I'm, just, just because there was a lot of emphasis on communications, it does feel like there's substance in there as well.
Well, I, I, I would agree with that wholeheartedly, and, you know, obviously, we have a lot of work to do. I, I think, you know, it, it's one piece, but it really has been a big change in the way that we do programming and that move towards in- inclusive programming and that. You know, we, we talk about it every day, so for us, it, you know, it's like just, it's the course of business, but i- if you really take a step back and, and look at, it's been a significant change in two years as to, as to how we've provided, you know, and again, my hope is that, you know, that, that's my belief from the research that I do and, and who I am as a person, that that's what's best for these kids. So, you know, on, at the end of the day, I hope I'm right, and I, I think this, um, report sort of validates a little bit anyway, that we're moving in the right direction. And, you know, we, we all will s- say, uh, change is great, we need, but everyone's a little resistant to that, right? So it, it takes a little bit of time to get everything in place that we want to happen, but again, I, when I look back and we talk, it, it's, wow, we, we really did get that done a lot qu- more quickly than when we first talked about it, that we thought it would happen. Um, and, you know, that's obviously the work of, of these great individuals, but all the, the teachers who, you know, came in with trepidation, like, uh, you know, who's this guy and why is he telling me to do things this way, right? They've all sort of embraced it and, you know, I, I think have been very upfront with, these are the things we need from you, and sometimes they hear from me, well, I can give you that, but I'm not prepared to give you this yet, you know? So, but for them to, to take that and say, oh, okay, and we're gonna put some trust in, in the administrative team and the direction that we're looking to go in, I think that, that just says a lot for the, for the people who work here.
I think the big thing too with, with, um, with school is that they, you only have, you know, kids only have one shot at third grade. They only have one shot at fourth grade, so, yeah, I, I have totally seen a, a very, um, I have seen changes for the better, definitely. Um, you know, full disclosure, I am a parent of a, um, I have a, uh, I'm a special education parent, so I can say myself that I have seen things change for the better. But I think the fact that you do only get one shot, so, yeah, you've, you've been here and you're, you're making these changes, but yet the child, if the parent isn't seeing, you know, it go from year to year, they're not gonna say, well, it was because they were new and they couldn't get everything, you know, together, where, what does that do for my child? Nothing, my child is still, has still missed out on it, you know? But I think the communication piece, obviously, it seems like we, we gotta do, we gotta do better with that, and that, that communication war just keeps coming up. And I think I have seen us, it's, do such a great job from when I first came on the committee or even before that. You know, I, I think our communication has, has, uh, been really good. So looking at, when I looked at this, I did get discouraged, but I have faith in you, Jack, I mean, I, I really do, right?
We can't hang it on Jack, one way or the other.
No, but I'm, no, but he, no, he knows, I'm not.
No, no, but it, but it comes down to, so I'm glad that you do, but those thirty parents who reported that they don't have confidence in you. Those are the ones I have.
And we don't wanna dismiss those, no, parents' feelings at all, we wanna get to the bottom of it and find out what we can do. And, and I, I believe that you wanna do that. You're, you're going to get it done, you're gonna work with the people that, uh, you know, can help you with that, and I know that you'll work with the people that you need to work with to get that done. That is important, the parents, they need to feel that they're being listened to and that their child is the most important child that that teacher deals with every day, even though that teacher deals with, you know, so many. Your child needs to be, the child also needs to feel like they're important to the, that teacher, you know, so.
And that we have the high-quality programs and services that are really going to help
Yes.
their child reach, you know, their
Their potential, full potential, full potential.
And learn.
That's in our mission statement.
Right. I, um, yeah, I, I, I appreciate you coming here, I'm sure it wasn't an easy thing to come here and, and discuss this. You know, you're not making excuses.
No.
I haven't once heard you say anything about making excuses, you're, you're taking this information, you're doing what you need to do with this information, because getting information can only be a good thing, it can only make us all better people, better, you know, better at whatever we wanna be better at, if, this is gonna help, um, and it's, it is hard, sometimes it is very hard to hear um, those things, but.
Knowledge is power.
Knowledge is power.
Very true, Cheryl.
You've got a great team.
We do have a great team.
You know, so, uh, the administrators I know are, you know, behind you as well, you know, Principal Richards, Principal Maher, Colin, I mean, you know, I, it's a great team, um, the superintendent, we, we can, we can get through this, we're just gonna make sure that the, the, um, the, the people, I hate the word mistrust, that really, like, gets to me, I, because I feel like we're, as a committee, are in that as well. You know, we, we don't want anybody to feel that they can't trust
Right.
the district, and I really think that we are as transparent as we can be, but obviously people don't feel that way. Not everybody feels that way, so let's figure out how we can.
Yeah, I mean, that, 'cause I, I really do preach, like, my door's always open, come on in, but I, I say that thinking that's easy for people to do. You know what I mean, that, you know, there may be a parent that maybe didn't have good experiences in school when they were young, and they don't wanna go meet with the director, like, they, you know, that, that's a hard thing, I think, sometimes for people, and, and those are things I have to constantly remind myself that, you know, because that would be the excuse, right, as if I said, well, they know they can come talk to me and they don't, but
That's on them, right.
But it's really looking at, so what are the barriers to them coming to see me and how can I eliminate those barriers?
Maybe some type of an action plan that maybe you also put in, not quite a blog, but maybe a weekly email update of, you know, this is what we're doing in special ed, or just, you know, maybe an article or some, but something to sort of gain their trust and their interest that they'll start to come to you as your open door policy.
Yeah, so, one of the flaws in our website is that I, I don't get like a click number, so I, I put things on there and I don't know if, if people.
I don't get a what?
Yeah, like, I don't, I don't know, I don't know if, if people read or not, because I, I do, uh, tend to put a monthly u- update on, on my website.
The little number on the bottom is like, it's really nineteen nineties kind of a thing.
So there is something, I, so I just need to.
No, there absolutely is, there absolutely is.
Okay, so I, I just need to familiarize myself with that.
Putting it physically on the page has gone out of style a little bit, but that, that data is collected, for sure.
Alright, good, so I should be able to thank you for that, because I, I just sort of.
Yeah, you'd like to. Colin will show you.
I will, he's looking for likes.
It's easy, just.
Yeah, can they put like emojis on that?
Dancing ones, yeah.
Excellent.
There we go, golden retriever dancing.
That's right, that's right.
Well, I, I find you to be very, um, I, I've
Approachable.
I've seen you, please, and I'm like, Jack, and I, you know, I don't feel like I'm bothering you, I don't feel like it's not, you know, if I wanna talk about something with my child, with you, I, I have never felt that you feel like it's not appropriate. And I don't feel like you're talking to me that way because of who I am, right? I, I don't think you take this, this position as treating me, you know, better than you would anybody else, and I appreciate that, that you have taken the time to talk to me, because people wouldn't think, oh, you know, that, you know, there is a chain of command, but you've always been very good about, if I had a question and you happen to be in the same place I am, I can ask you.
If I'm not, even if I'm not in the same place as you.
But, but there are people, right, that just because you say you have an open door policy, don't take you up on that, you know, because, yeah, they might feel like, oh.
Gotta go to a few basketball games, Jack.
Yeah.
That's how you get people to talk to you.
How'd you do that?
Good or bad.
Good or bad, yes.
I guess the one thing that just comes to mind is, you know, we've seen this increase in the need for social, emotional learning and perhaps with the parents as well, you know, if the kids have some social, emotional struggles, maybe the parents do, or some of them do, in walking through your door.
Well, right, yeah, I, and I definitely recognize that, and that, it is a constant reminder though, you know, you, you really do have to take a step back and say, alright, so there's, there's a reason that this parent doesn't feel comfortable coming to me and, and trying to determine what that is, and again, breaking that barrier down.
But, but it's, but if they're coming to Caitlin, that's just as important, that's what we have to understand. Just like, you know, you don't want everybody coming to me because then, you know, the poor people at the school are going like, what the heck, like, you can't do anything, right? So, you know, that's what we really want, I mean, we want people to trust Jack, but we really want people to trust that they feel like they know who at the school is gonna be somebody who, no matter what their issue is, is gonna listen to them and hear them. We're gonna agree to disagree sometimes, that's a reality, right? So it's nice to say we're communicating, but com- listening to somebody and hearing somebody does not always mean agreement. And sometimes that's, parents get a little confused at that, like, you didn't hear me, no, I didn't agree with you, I did hear you, I can explain to you exactly what you said and what I figured, what I'm taking from that. So it, that, it's the art of, you know, special education in, is at, at its core, set up to be average serial. Just look at the way the team structure works, right? You got all the professionals sitting around the table and you got the poor one parent, or maybe they're, you know, two parents. And, you know, we say they're part of the team, but, you know, they may be the only one at the team who feels that a child needs a certain thing, and all the other experts say, but no, we have all this data, which we do, you know, that says something different, that, that puts the parent in a place that they are not gonna feel hurt.
Right.
Right, so it's, as much as I know we really work at the process, it's, the process is tricky, so, you know, that's the law. You know, so, but it's, it's, it's all part of it, right? How are we gonna figure out how we're gonna have these conversations with people so that we, they know they're heard even if they know we don't agree? Like, we need to at least try to come to it, to, to getting to yes or a come, and, and I know these guys do, do that, it's just, you know, parent by parent, like, like Jack said, it's gotta be, you know, one by one. It's not something we can do for everybody, but it's like every parent, if we can do it for enough parents, then that critical mass builds.
Well, and as a parent who thinks that their child isn't getting what they should be getting, I'm gonna fight like crazy and if I don't get what I'm, not what I want, if I don't get what I think my child should be getting, I don't care what you know, you're wrong, you know?
Exactly, and then it becomes this, them versus us, and that's when nothing really good comes up. That's why we go to hearing, and we don't go very often, which is a good thing, it's a testimony to the way the schools do work the process. But when we do, you know, it, it's never an easy, it's never an easy way to get to resolution, you know, because it's about feelings. It's not always about facts, right? Ed- special education's very feeling-oriented, right, a lot of emotions around it, so.
Tom, did you have a question, Bethany?
I think he does have a question.
So, you have a review coming up in the state in March?
So mid-cycle review.
Mid-cycle.
So how does, how does, uh, what's generated from that review in this report, what's, what's similar, what's different?
So the, the review in March is much more compliance-driven, so again, this particular piece was, um, initiated by the district in that we were looking at those specific five areas, like those were what, you know, the three of us and in talking with other staff felt were the most important things that we wanted to get information on. When the Department of Ed comes in March, it's, it's really strictly compliance review. Do you have a policy for this? Do you have structures in place for this? So, um, uh, last year, uh, in, it was probably around March, I had to upload, so they give you a list of, you know, show me that you, you have this, this, this in place, so I upload all of that data into the, the state system, and when they come, it's particularly for this where it's a mid-cycle, it's not the full review, they're really just gonna be looking at, alright, so you, you showed us, but, you know, now let's really see it, that it's in your buildings and, you know, that, that stuff's a bit.
That's a mid-cycle check-in though, Jack, right? So, so the things that they're coming to look at are things that they identified in the report that they came the first time?
Ac- actually, no, no, it's more because they're looking at Ac- actually, no, no, it's more because they're looking at, it, it's not differentiated from district to district. So when every district that has a mid-cycle review this year will be looking at the same, that they, they want the same data.
Okay.
And that is typically driven by the federal indicators. So there's specific areas that the, the federal government has determined are deficiency areas within schools. So those are the pieces that the state of Massachusetts are gonna look to say, alright, so the feds are saying we're not doing this.
But could it be the case that, to Tom's question, could it be the case that some of those same things will be looked at and they're. Some of the, these same questions will be looked at in that report, just from a different lens?
The, the vast majority of this review is actually civil rights, not, there's some pieces of special education. So when, when they do a full review, every six years, they do a full review, and that is for, um. Um, students that have English as a second language, students with, uh, special needs, and then civil rights throughout the district. So for this particular, it's, it's focused, um, primarily on civil rights. So again, it's looking at what are your policies? So an example is, you know, if, um, a student gets pregnant within your school. What's your policy to make sure that that student receives an appropriate education? So, we upload that policy, they may talk to a few people to say, oh, well, have you ever had a pregnant student and how did you, you know? That, that kinda thing, that it really is compliance driven, not necessarily, um. You know, kinda digging into what you're doing for programs. There's no, um, student file review as part of the mid-cycle. However, when they come for the full compliance review, they review a, a large number of student files to make sure. Um, you know, to look at what you're actually providing for programming and also, you know, did you check the right box on the IP and, you know, those, those kinds of.
And those aren't, those aren't.
So that's not part of this.
They can go in on, they go into, yeah, into whatever they'd like.
Yeah, I mean, we know, we know ahead of time which files that.
Oh, so you pull them for them?
Yes, yeah. Now, that doesn't prevent them, so if they see some issues, they can say, hey, we want ten more files. You know what I mean? Like, they, but, um, you know, typically, I, I, I would say certainly for Georgetown, our, our actual files are in pretty good. Shape, you know, we have a good system, good organizational system in place. So, um, you know, from our last review, that was not. An area of concern at the state.
Right. But be, but prior to you being here, we did have some.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Well, I, I can't take credit for that, because that was, that review was done the spring before I started.
Right.
So I can't take any credit for that. But again, the vast majority of this is, is around our policies regarding civil rights.
Do you read the bar versus satisfaction?
Yeah.
Yes, that's, that's a good distinction.
But again, when they, when they come back three years from now, it'll be much more tuned with what we're actually providing for, for services for kids.
And they will look at programs.
Oh, they'll do observations, you know, there's, there's no, uh, again, when they come, they can say, we wanna do this or that, but there's no. Designated time like for interviews with staff or anything. It, it really is just looking to say, alright, we were here three years ago. You had things in place or, or corrected those things that you didn't. Let's make sure that it's still running the way it should be, you know.
Okay. So when you get their report, we'll, we'll.
I, I promise you, and I never make promises, but I'll, I'll get that out as soon as I, uh, get my hands on that and I'll get it posted so that.
Okay.
And I'll, um, also do a, you know, a little write-up on my webpage that, to explain a report for people who don't necessarily. You know, didn't have a chance to see this or weren't involved in.
And, and I'd post this presentation as well, cause, you know, for people who just want this sort of town interview.
Yeah.
And don't wanna read the whole report, you know, this is a great summary of, of what the main points were.
And you, you may appreciate this a little bit more, Michael, so I can't always put the whole, I, I can't like, just upload the presentation. Cause it will crash our system, so it's a link.
Yeah.
I think I had crashed the system before, actually.
Google Drive is the answer.
Yeah.
And I'm sure you'll give us updates whenever we, you know, as to, you know, how things are going and if you're seeing improvement, like, things like that.
I think I'm, I'm scheduled again.
I think we're scheduled on it, yeah.
Of February, um, with a, a focus more on what we're doing through our SAP process.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Okay.
Those types of things. So certainly, you know, throughout that piece, ask any questions.
Thank you. For all your hard work on this. Thank you, thank you, Jack.
Alright, thank you.
Have a good evening.
You too.
Okay, so we're gonna talk about a, um. Warrant signing subcommittee. Who initiated that?
You guys.
Are you talking about electronic or just like?
Electronic signing.
So you don't have to go down and actually sign it?
Last email was like, I know we talked about it before, what is happening? Okay, so I was just thinking that we were gonna like, select.
And the reason.
Always be the ones to.
And the reason for doing three people is that you need to, in, in the system, you need to assign people to sign the document and it just be whoever gets there first.
Whoever gets there first. Okay.
So it's, so the three people in the subcommittee would get an email saying, like, the warrant is available for signature.
Who's gonna come in?
Who's gonna, well, who's gonna?
All the committee members have to do it.
Are now able to sign the document, the back.
Digitally, you can sign it.
So it's gonna be an email and a click.
Right.
Instead of physically going.
We'll still be available for you to come in and look at.
Yeah.
Um, but if.
But you don't have to.
To sign it so that Julie can, you know.
Right. She would appreciate that. Pam, Michael, Cheryl?
It's gonna be the same three people.
No, you have to decide.
Alright, so it's gonna be three, okay, because that will always be on the electronic version. Okay. I'll do that.
Or, or.
Or not.
I mean, cause I do payroll, I can.
I can do it.
Do you want someone other than the?
Share the wealth. I don't mind. So it's just, you wanna do it? It has to be three people. Okay, so you do payroll already. Suzanne, Michael and Pam?
Yeah.
Sure. Wanna, wanna be on, wanna do that?
Okay.
Do you do payroll?
Oh, that's easy. Yeah, Suzanne.
I don't know.
No. Probably not.
Okay, so I'll make a motion to approve the establishment of a.
Different.
Warrant signing subcommittee and to appoint, uh, Pam, Mike, Chris, Michael, Hinchcliffe and Suzanne McDonald to the subcommittee.
So moved.
Alan Faber? You guys are gonna do a great job. Try to copy my signature. Okay, and then. Uh, we have a donation, fifteen hundred dollars from the Haver Santa Parade. Oh, yeah, they do that, right, they get, when we participate, that's nice that they do that.
Very nice.
Um, so that's very generous, and that would go to.
Public school donation.
So, but will it go to the music parents?
Yes, it goes to the, um, yeah, the band.
Yeah, great, okay. So I'll make a motion to accept the donation in the amount of one thousand five hundred dollars from Haver Santa Parade Committee. In recognition of the middle high school band participation in the Santa Parade with gratitude. So moved? Alan Faber?
Hi.
Hi.
They, I want, do they pay every?
Every year we.
That's it, but every school, it is a huge parade, it's a great parade.
I don't know.
I don't know, they do every school, but I know that it's.
Yeah, that we've getting, yeah, wow, that's, that's great. It's a long day. Yeah, but yeah, when the kids have to get there like early in the, you know, early in the.
Parade.
It's a very big parade. Okay, uh, meal charging policy. You want to revise the meal charging policy, um, because of the guidelines for the Department of Ed?
Right.
Okay, so the M E S C developed a, um, template?
Yep. Well, the, they, you got the advisory here, because you always get this mass policy newsletter.
Yep.
And that, we use that. You also have in here the current policy, and then, you know, we basically. Coordinated it, it, you know, went, went through it and Cheryl did, Cheryl and Pam did a lot of coordination work and Cheryl drafted it, and then we met with Suzanne. And Sean, twice, I think, um, to just make sure that.
Tracy.
You know, and Tracy, right, make sure that it really made sense and that it was doable and. The major changes are obviously that you can't talk to the children, although if, if a student says. How much money do I have on my balance? And, you know, then they can tell them.
They can ask for a balance.
They can't say, oh, honey, tell your mother that you only have, you know, three, three dollars left on your account or, um, and, you know.
The alternate meal.
Yeah, the, big change of the alternate meal. There is no alternate meal. We, we will always give a child a meal, but what the guidelines were pretty clear on is that. It, that doesn't mean they can get a second meal, or they can get any snacks, or they can get.
No.
No à la carte items, so they can get a meal, but it still counts to char, they still get charged for it, so it's not a free meal.
Right.
Unless we have money on account.
They don't pay for it, ever.
So, yeah, so, but, but parents just need to know that, you know, there's no alter, alternate meal. Child will get a, a lunch. But it will get charged to their account.
So when there was an alternate, alternate meal, like the cheese sandwich, that wasn't?
No, that was charged.
That was charged also, but now the, it's now called an alternate meal, but ineffective.
It's the same, no, it's the same meal that everybody gets.
Same food, but.
Whatever.
But it's no different in terms of when they ate the cheese sandwich, the parents took on charge for it.
Correct.
Yes, oh, yes, yes, nothing changed there, but now they're getting the, the regular.
Yeah, and they're not like, like people aren't like, oh, they have a cheese sandwich because they.
Right, right, no, no, there's no identification at all about any.
And if they, you know, go up, they get their lunch and they already have a negative balance. Then the, um, cashiers aren't gonna say anything, so when, if that student goes up again to get another lunch.
Then what happens?
They would, could say, you don't have enough.
Your, for a second.
Or you don't have enough money in your account.
Your account won't allow that purchase today.
Right?
Something like that, you know.
Because, yeah.
So on their screen, they can already tell that today they.
They've gotten a lunch.
They've gotten a lunch, so it would show up like, okay, this is a second lunch. Okay, so at that time, it would say sorry.
Right.
Okay.
I mean, we spent a lot of time talking and Pam was the little guinea pig. I, we don't know what the follow-up to your thing with Michael was, but we, we.
Oh, you let him go to zero?
No, 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 no. We talked about, we talked about that maybe some of the challenge is, what we don't want kids to do is not know, how would they know? It's not, they don't have access to.
Right, Carol concerned, she wants the students to be able to see what their balance is.
So I'm interested in seeing if there's a feature or a way for, without accessing the parent's credit card. Cause I get why that would not be a cool thing, you know, if, if like the student could set up an account that was basically read-only.
They can.
So that if he or she, um, thought they might have, or, or wasn't sure, they could go on their phone and see my balance is. You know, two dollars, so I'm not gonna go up with a eight dollar, you know, purchase, right? So, it's because just to avoid that embarrassment of even getting to the register and have somebody say.
There's no cash allowed either, right? So there is cash allowed.
Cash is allowed, yeah. So there is a read-only feature?
Well, yeah. So you get your own account, it sounds like.
Your, your child can set up their own account.
Not, no credit card attached to it, cause you can do my school bucks with no credit card attached now.
Right, right. Right.
So that's something I think we should somehow let students know is a.
Especially at the higher level.
Be a way that when the student goes up and they are paying, maybe on another screen, the student can then see their balance?
Well, that's the other thing we look at, could we literally put a computer, you know, stationed in, in the, you know, if they didn't wanna do it on their phone.
Just like a little screen that shows their balance.
But it, with the parents. But it would have to be with a password.
Their balance?
I don't know.
I don't know.
Well, I, again.
Well, it would have to be through the parents.
I don't know that we even put that in the policy, but that's something we were talking about in terms of a procedure.
Own phone.
No, I understand that, but I'm just saying, you know, if, if the cashier can see the balance. Or can see whether they have a balance or not, would there be a way to do some type of a split screen or a screen on the other side where the child could also see? When they're going up to pay and it would show them what their balance is, so they would know. Same thing as having it on their phone. But only it would be right there, so every time they go up, they would see the balance.
I don't know if that would work because.
No, well, there, there could be like that privacy thing, like you would have a ATM card.
The register is set up so that the cashier has access to it. I, I don't know if you could be confidential if you did it that way, but. But I, you know, we, we certainly, Suzanne, everything is on the table, you know, again, that's more of a procedure than it is the policy. But we're just trying to give students the tools.
Sure.
To manage their money, right? I mean, if you went into McDonald's and you had your own debit card, you know, you look at your balance to see. You're not gonna go to the counter and be embarrassed because of your money.
Well, or you pay a, yeah, well, good point. Pay by check, and so I give the check to, to Michael, but it doesn't always get to the lunch cashier right away. Sometimes it takes a few days. And so, you know, and I, I've just, I've told him, like, if you don't get the check to the cashier, then you'll only be able to get a meal. You won't be able to get anything else. And that, that got his attention. It's like, oh, oh, okay, I'll find that check. I'll get that check there, you know? Um, so they just wanna be able to continue, you know, buying what they wanna buy.
Right, well, and I guess if the kids don't know, like, they don't know that they can check or, you know, oh, wow.
Right, or they don't know what the consequences are.
Well, they can't currently check, so that's why we're trying to figure out, is there a feature of this program that would allow for kids who want to check?
Cause it can feel pretty automatic for kids. I mean, I think Michael, he just goes up and it just, you know.
Just magic money, that's all he's there.
Magic money, right.
Well, and, and we have kids who might spend ten dollars on a lunch. So if I'm a parent, I put fifty dollars on it thinking that's gonna buy me, you know, a couple weeks' time. And then I find out that my child has one, two lunches and buys a chips and a drink, you know, it could be one of the nine bucks.
App will tell you that too, and particularly like, you know, with senior boys. Michael's a senior boy, so he does. He does buy two lunches and a bunch of other things, and you know, you'd.
Yeah.
He's hungry.
He's hungry, I mean, I, and I, I mean, I, I tell him, as long as he's not wasting anything, I don't want it.
I mean, we did, we did.
Going in the trash.
We did put in here that, you know.
Eating these things.
We're saying to the parents, it's kind of their responsibility to sort of talk to their children about what they want the spending patterns to be.
Own ideas about what's appropriate. Obviously, some people wouldn't be comfortable with that. They'd want one lunch.
And then there's a, and then there's, still, sometimes what happens, like Sha- Sean was saying, sometimes what happens is, you know, a, a parent might. Send a note in saying, I don't want my child to ever have dessert, uh, making it up, but, and so that pops up on the screen when the cashier says it. But it's putting the cashier in a tough situation to say, honey, honey, your mom says you can't have, you know, a dessert. So, th- those are the kinda things we're saying to the parent, you know, if, if you don't want your kid to have dessert, then you gotta, yeah. You gotta tell them.
That's, that's hard to police, you know, have someone else police your child.
Yeah, and I think it's difficult for the cashier.
Sure.
It is, right?
It's not exactly their place either, you know?
No, it's an awkward place.
But it is a, um, an advertised part of the my school.
Yeah, oh, that's funny.
So that parents can monitor what their kids are eating.
Okay, so.
Quick question on the, I noticed that the, um, balances owed the, um. The back page, the balances of, of the old policy.
Of the old policy.
Are not there anymore, so the, the sort of, if we're not paying our, our food services bill. We had put into place sort of the option of restricting other fee-based.
Oh, yeah, we did, but then, cause we wanna make sure we can legally do that.
And that fell out of this policy.
I think we need to check on whether or not we can really legally do that.
Okay.
I don't, I don't know that we've ever gotten a legal opinion. I, I think, you know, I, one of my notes to contact Greg, just to, you know.
Like in terms of denying extracurriculars and things like that?
Well, no, it's more, it's more like.
If you haven't paid for lunch, can you play soccer in the fall?
But that's in the old policy.
Exactly.
Correct.
But part of that was, you know, we just wanna make sure.
Yeah, so we, yeah.
So we can approve this.
Yeah.
Yes, and we could always add it back in.
Exactly. Okay, is that the only question we have?
Yeah, and we also took out the insufficient funds.
Yeah.
The what?
Which I was curious.
The insufficient funds?
The part B of that as well, which I was just curious.
Art receiving checks returned for insufficient funds?
Yeah.
Checks returned for.
We're not saying that right.
Well, actually, that could be added in, that should stay in, actually.
That is, that's what happens.
Okay.
Okay, so we are gonna keep that one in.
So you wanna, you wanna, we wanna reinsert this whole section for B, all the way down? Is that, is that what you're saying, Michael?
Uh, just, just B, cause refunds are still in.
I know, but B is, B is checked.
Adult purchases.
You wanna, is it, is it adult purchasing refunds too?
I think adult purchases is another section.
Yeah, so it's just a paragraph that ends in accepted.
Just B. Yeah, just B.
Okay, so we're gonna put that in, yep, and that will be A.
Which paragraph is that?
Right here, this one. Oh, okay, so that'll, that'll be in there, so it's, so it's this policy with the addition of B going in there.
So B, do we want just to go as A, at the end, after policy communications, or do we wanna?
And B is all the way down here?
I would sneak it above policy communications. I feel like it.
Yeah, I think so too. It should be under the delinquent accounts collections, yeah. Okay, so I'll make a motion to adopt the revised policy EFCA meal charging policy with the addition of, um, the checks returned for non-sufficient funds paragraph that will be inserted below delinquent accounts collections. So moved.
Second.
Um, discussion, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
And, and I guess with the review of the.
And then with the, yes, if anything needs to be added on after we have legal console, we can do that.
Yeah.
Right. Okay, that's good. Okay, we have a donation from the PTA. The kindergarten is having a field trip. Where's the field trip?
Um, it's to the North Shore Music Theater.
Oh, nice.
They're going to see Curious George.
Oh, what is that?
What is that?
Um, the end of March.
Yeah, oh, that'll, that'll be great. North Shore Music Theater is a great place.
Yes.
Um, okay, that's, that's a very generous donation, and that will just go towards the overall, um, the overall trip, okay. That's very nice of the PTA, thank you very much. Uh, make a motion to accept the donation amount of nine hundred and sixty-seven dollars and thirty-three cents from the Georgetown PTA, which will help with the cost of the kindergarten field trip to North Shore Music Theater.
Two.
Second.
Uh, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Thank you. So can I just tell you two fun food things while we're on that topic? Um, I, check out the, I think it's gonna end up on the parent Facebook page because I think Mike forwarded it, but Sean's been posting.
He did, yes.
Pictures of this school lunch, yeah, so just so if you didn't see that.
Oh, so what, what are they doing, the everyday lunch?
Well, I don't know if it's every day, but he's, he's posting.
Hierarchically.
At least once a week, yeah.
Oh, good.
So it's featuring the, the food choices.
So people can really see what the lunches look like.
And, uh, and then tomorrow, I'm a judge in the chop challenge. Are you a judge, Dan?
Yeah, tell me about that.
So you watch the Food Network, you notice, have you ever watched Chopped on the Food Network? Okay, so it's, what happens is you have teams, they're gonna have teams from the wellness class, and so those teams are given a mystery basket. So they, from the items in the mystery basket, they have to create a plate that the judges have to eat and judge.
It could bake something.
So I do know a couple of things. The spinach is one, avocado's another. Can't remember the other two.
Eggs.
What, eggs was one?
Eggs, yeah. Doesn't sound like a secret.
Oh, do you have?
Well, I think the kids know the secret, right, the kids, so, so they have to plan a, I think it's gonna be a, they have some kind of brunch item and maybe a dessert.
Okay.
So we have to go over and be the judges of this, so they have to, they have so much time to work together to create something interesting with these ingredients.
Nice. That's awesome.
But, uh, the tech integra- tech integration specialists have been working with them, um, on coming up with a, you know, program.
Yeah.
So that should be fun. I'm, I'm kind of like excited to figure out exactly how they're gonna do this, but Shay Matthews has been, um,
That's cool.
The teacher who's been really instrumental. I thought it was a very creative idea, so I'll keep you posted.
So is it in the cafeteria that they utilize it?
Uh, no, I don't know, no, I think.
The Mrs. McCarthy's room, where there's a stove.
Oh, yeah.
Oh.
They have all, everything they need right there.
That's great.
And then we have to sort of ask them questions while they're cooking and.
Right, about like the, the meal and the wellness and, you know.
So it'll be, it'll be fun. I think it's gonna be a great idea. I'll try to, we'll try to take some pictures.
Yeah, will you take some pictures and post them? And I, I have to say, um, Principal Richards, I love your shout-outs.
Yeah, aren't they fun?
I think it's, I think it's great. I love seeing them on Twitter, and I think the kids always look so happy, and the interaction with you and the kids, I love it. I think it's great.
Yeah, the kids really love it. It is great.
And I also went to one of Principal Richards', uh, coffee and conversation, yeah.
Oh, you did, yep.
And how did that go? Awesome, great, great.
How many people came, Dan? I couldn't come because I was running the safety meeting.
Well, he's, he's offering four of them, different, so.
Right, yeah, different times, which is great.
So there's four, so it can remain small and intimate in the, um, the brew cafe, so five, seven, nine.
Okay, great, well, that's great.
It's very, but it's, the conversation's guided by the parents coming.
Yeah.
And tonight was, uh, was actually interesting, it was most, mostly, uh, freshman parents.
Ah.
So they guided the conversation, um.
Yeah.
So the four, uh, two for middle and, uh, two for high, and so it's, it's been nice, morning in the morning, morning in the evening, and.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Nice.
Yeah, cause she, you're making the time for that, that was very helpful.
It's been great.
Yeah, that's great.
Yeah.
Good, and it starts small, but it'll, it'll pick up if it's, you know, and I like the fact that you're offering it multiple times, just because.
Yeah.
Yeah.
I saw one, there was a five o'clock or some, something like that.
Yeah, there was one at fi- uh, the last one was five o'clock tonight, and, uh, it was mostly, um, like I said, freshman parents in the conversation, uh, they guided it and shared, shared information back and forth, not just from.
Conversation, right?
That was good.
It's great.
Yep.
Yep, very good.
That's great, thank you for doing that.
Yep. And then can we just jump back to the PTA, uh, because the PTA is having on January twenty-sixth, the casino night, yes.
Yeah. The casino night.
That's right.
January twenty-sixth, and tell me Pam, where that is?
Uh, it's at the Black, beautiful Black Swan Country House, and it's a Kentucky Derby theme, which you, you know.
Oh, it is, okay. Yeah, I saw that. But it's not required, no, it's not required.
Dress up or not, whatever, no, it's not required, no, but you can buy the tickets online, and, uh, on the district Facebook page is a link.
Nice, okay.
And there's.
And they're still looking for volunteers.
Twenty-five dollars a ticket, so.
They're looking for volunteers for.
Let's just give you a job. I think they, I think they're running, I think I'm, they're volunteering for me to check in people.
Do you know that that was the very first PTA function I ever cheered?
Oh, really?
Was the casino night way back when.
Oh, wow, so you started it.
Well, there was, yeah, yeah, but that's what got me into, that's what got me into the PTA.
Isn't it nice to think it's still going on?
It was wonderful, yeah, it was wonderful.
It's a lot of fun.
That must be.
I've been to a number of them.
That must be.
No, but it is, it's a lot, the, um, it's fun, it's a lot of fun.
Thank you for all you guys.
So they are still looking for volunteers?
Yeah.
Yes.
That requires a lot of volunteers because of the, the tables and everything, right?
There's a lot of tables, yeah, it's pretty good.
Okay, so if anyone else there that's watching wants to volunteer, did they ask staff to, because?
They did, yep.
Um.
There was some, there was some staff member on the, uh, sign of genius.
Yes, there are, yes.
There's some staff members on there.
Oh, that's good, that's great.
And you can get little hats on Amazon.
Yeah, and there's different, um.
Oh, hats, hats. Or they'll have, I'm sure they'll have beads.
Different like shifts that you can wear.
Yeah, yes, yeah. And so, well, if you, yeah, yeah, well, it's a, it's a, it's a casino, so they want you to, you know, so, yeah, it'll be fun.
I think, I think there was discussion about selling hats.
Yeah.
At the event, um.
Oh, oh.
So when you come in, you can just buy one?
You could, there's gonna be a limited number, so, you know, people like last minute.
Right. About ten dollars a piece, I mean.
Right, yeah.
Yeah.
Head down, that you put on.
That's an idea, well, I hope it's a success. It is definitely a fun night.
That's great.
Um, we've had some bad weather, because it's always been in January when they have, and it has been a couple of times that it's been very cold or bad weather.
January's tough, yeah.
At the end of January, drinking time.
Yeah, so good luck to the PTA with that.
Yes.
Um, okay, did anyone have any questions regarding the, um, regarding the superintendent's goals?
That's why I kept the poor people here, cause in case, in case they have, you have any questions that they can help.
Well, no, if you don't ask questions, we made them stay for.
No, I, I, I've been sort of thinking, well, maybe we skipped it by act, by on purpose, but.
Did anybody have any questions, Pam?
Um, this has Colin.
I just, I looked it up, the Mobimax.
Mobimax, yep.
And can you tell me a little bit about Mobimax, Mobimax and what we're doing with it?
Sure. Colin, do you wanna talk most, Colin knows more than I about, I know, I, I know by working knowledge of it, but I think Colin is more in-depth knowledge, okay?
Great, great.
So Mobimax is an online, um, assessment slash skills practice, uh, program, website that you can go to. We are, we have it in both schools right now. Um, John Crossman mostly manages it for the Penbrook School and gets students rostered and, and get, get teachers, uh, ready to go. And, um, I work with some of the middle and high school teachers to, to make sure that they're all ready to go. Um, and what we're investigating right now is whether or not Mobimax can, can fit multiple needs that we're currently getting from other sources. Um, mostly in the terms of, um, some consistent benchmarking and assessment data for students that are tied to, uh, our standards. Uh, because if we can get good benchmarking and reporting from Mobimax, um, and then also use that same program to progress monitor and to have students practice those skills, we can really bundle a lot of the things that we're trying to do in, in one place. So it's one, one data source that kinda fits the bill for a lot of things, so.
And it talks about adaptive differentiated learning, so could that help with some of what Jack's talking about?
Yeah, so. Yeah, exactly, so, so one of the things that Mobimax does is, students, uh, can take a placement test, and they offer, um, lots of different subject areas. And we're looking at the vertical teams right now, kind of what does it look like on the ELA side, what does it look like on the math side? They have some new science and social studies, um, areas from Mobimax, and what students do is they take a placement test. And then based on how they score on that placement test, similar to like, uh, the math test that we do at Penbrook, it adapts the test as students take it, so if they get a question wrong, it'll ask them kind of a little lower level question for that standard and kind of calibrates where a student is at at any given point in time. And then what the software does is it creates kind of a, a differentiated queue of lessons that that student should practice in order to fill in the gaps of, where they, they'll shorten that placement test, so.
Khan Academy.
And many, oh, sorry, Colin, I would say many teachers are already using it for interventions within the classroom, so they'll have.
It's a tier-two intervention.
During independent time.
Individually, individually.
The point where all your students are in their understanding and, wow, that sounds awesome.
Yeah, and then, so, and on top of that, so you can just kinda let the program run itself with the, with the, with the creating of lesson plans for the students. But then what we're also looking at is for specific interventions or a small guided reading group or, you know, whatever it may be, teachers can go in and actually put lessons at the top of the queue, so that, let's say I'm doing something with character and setting for my narrative unit, um, I can put that at the top of all of my students' queues to reinforce a, you know, a short lesson that I, that I just taught on that. So we're kind of looking at it right now. They're presenting at our next admin team meeting. I set up a webinar, so we can all learn as administrators what it's capable of and whether or not it can take the place of some things that we, you know, that we have.
Yeah, I'm thinking it can be something that's also good for the top kids, so enriching, you know, cause they, it's individualized to the, to the child. So it's not just, we're not looking at it just for remediation or additional practice. It also could be, you know, to stretch, to stretch students too.
Enrichment.
I just had a question about the MCAS tutoring at Penbrook, um, when that was gonna be underway.
So we are starting that in February, and we're going to run five ELA, five weeks of ELA sessions and then five weeks of math.
And right now, we're, Margaret's put out something, um, for teachers, uh, you know, it's been a little bit slow so far in terms of.
I've gotten some word to that, you know.
Did, did you? Perfect, so we're doing good.
My optimism.
But we're also wanted to, if Margaret's still short, there may be teachers at the middle high school who might wanna offer to be tutors. So we might wanna help you help us, Dan, get some, get that word out, you know, because we need, we wanna keep the groups small enough so we can do more individualized work, because it's, we just don't wanna have the groups and say, all right, here's six kids, but those six kids are in really different places, right? So if there's six kids that we know, or four kids that know, need writing, like really, you know, attacking, you know, how to take a pro- a question apart, we wanna be able to put those kids in the same group, right?
So how many total students have we identified?
Well, we're looking at, um, fourth, fifth, and sixth grade, and, um, right now, we're looking at the children that were identified in that fourth quartile. So, um, in fourth grade, there are about twelve children, fifth grade, maybe about twenty, and then sixth grade, maybe about another twelve or thirteen.
Twenty.
So, um, we'll just kind of, you know, start there.
Yep, and not everybody will come, right, so, but, but to be able to offer it to those students.
That was great. Any other questions?
No.
No, we've been busy, and, you know, like I said, I, it's a team effort, that's why I made this stay a little longer.
Thank you, everybody, I appreciate it.
Thank you.
And probably go, thank you. Did you want me to just quickly follow up with the climate change curriculum thing? Did you care about that?
Yeah.
So, um, I mean, not that you didn't care about it, but, uh, Colin actually probably, he gave me some information too. So after the meeting, I, uh, emailed Cerise Cawthorn, because, you know, one of the questions was, what are, what are we doing? So she, um, I've got yours, I gotta find Cerise's. Um, she said, uh, global warming, climate change, and the role of humans in promoting it are already components of the environmental science and the engineering and, of engineering for the future course. Other courses such as the seventh grade enrichment class works with it as part of the engineering standards, especially in light of how alternative energy technologies can be used to reduce reliance on fossil fuels. This is expanded upon further in the high school engineering course where students design green homes to promote more efficient energy use, among other things, and the impact of humans on climate and the environment forms the basis for that project and its discussion. The environmental science course covers the causes and consequences of climate change and what is being done, not being done, could be done, to make positive change. The biology and honors biology also discuss climate change during the ecology unit. In physics, climate change is broached during the areas of forces in liquids, it's all the science stuff, right? Uh, forces in liquids parentheses, how varying heat transfer patterns impacts the flow of air and water, and again, during the heat and temperature unit. We discuss alternative energy forms in several places linking to, linking them to both efficiency and consumer savings and the need to reduce reliance on fossil fuels with the subject of climate change featuring, featuring heavily in the discussions. Um, uh, she said, uh, we have been for years very forthright about climate change, even when parents have been angry for giving the students an honest assessment of how humans have negatively impacted the environment. So, you know, it's that whole, you know, are you influencing, um, but she said, um, they were promoting large-scale, uh, let's see, impacted and, impacted the environment and promoted large-scale crises such as rapid extinction rates and climate change. Despite the recent uptick in media coverage, we have always been aware of and taken steps to alert students to the nature of the problem, its magnitude and human culpability. Overall, our department has been active both in classroom discussions, project work, and laboratory work in addressing climate change, the factors that promote it and potential solutions that are being tested and proposed. The subject is reinforced in a variety of courses at various grade levels, so the message is consistent and saturating. I hope, um, some of this helps clarify and let me know if there's more information you need. And then Colin, you, you chimed in and basically added, um, that, uh, there's some things at the, at the elementary, right? So I gotta just find yours. So I gotta just find yours. Um, so the touches, touches aspects, there are a few things at Pembroke that touch the aspects of climate change, there's specific STEM scopes units that address climate, focus of those scopes is on making sure students understand the difference between weather and climate. Uh, there's also a unit in fifth grade titled Human Footprint, which asks students to investigate how humans affect the environment, both positively and negatively, and teachers are also teaching students about conservation and alternate energy sources. In sixth grade, uh, the students study extreme weather events and how climate change can impact the frequency and magnitude of those events. So I'm gonna send Rob, just because I think he would be interested to hear that.
Yeah.
That information, but I, I wanted to report back, cause he made a presentation to you. You know, we can always do more, but I would say that, you know.
That sounds pretty remarkable.
This shows that we, we're, we're doing a lot on the topic.
So you're gonna, you're gonna let Rob know.
I'll forward that to Rob, but I wanted to share it with you first.
All right.
Thank you, guys, have a great night.
Yeah, thank you for, um.
Following up on that, yeah.
Yeah, giving that information to us, it sounds like it's, it's worked pretty well, taking care of it right now, so hopefully Rob will.
Well, you know, I think they're, they're certainly valuing everything else.
Well, like you had said, there's always more that we can do, but, I mean.
It seems pretty. I mean, it's a concern.
It's a big concern, yeah, or, I mean, Rob made a lot of.
Good points.
Good points, yes.
Okay, uh, let's quickly do subcommittee reports, I do just wanna say that we, um.
Don't you think it's cold here?
Yeah, it is cold in here.
A little, yeah.
Uh, safety met today, and we, the primary, um, topic of conversation was the incident at, at Pembroke, um, you know, during dismissal time when, uh, there was a smell that, um, luckily wasn't anything major, um, but because it was at a time of, of drop, it was at drop-off.
It was drop-off, right?
As, because it was at the time of drop-off, it kind of turned into kind of a mess, um, so, with Lieutenant Hatch there, and Mike, and, um, Chief Mitchell, um, and then the bus company too.
The bus companies there, yeah.
I think we have a, a good idea of, on a go-forward basis, how to handle that, and then Hope's gonna update the crisis manual. Um, Margaret had a lot of input in there, and, um, I think we'll, we'll have it under control, I hope.
They're, they're gonna write the procedure up, um, you know, because, uh, you know, the police apparently did their own sort of, cause they said it was a, a real mess, you know, keep, keep, try, trying to keep people out. They said, you know, in the future, if something like that happens, of course, you pull the alarm, which they did, they did the right thing. They pulled the alarm, evacuated the building, um, but, you know, there wasn't a way to stop the traffic, so what the police said is, you know, will immediately, will not allow anybody to go up. The people that are up are gonna be directed, they're gonna need to move, right?
With their child.
With, with their child in the park, so they're not dropping their child off, but they can kind of queue themselves up in the lower parking lot, because the lower parking lot where the kids were staged for after school or before school is gonna, is gonna be on the field, so there won't be kids there, um, so.
So they'll go to the field.
What's the lower parking lot?
Low, lot area is by the, by the baseball field.
By the fields.
Oh, it's tiny.
No, no, that's the big one, the kindergarten one is the sort of tiny one in the middle, right?
It's a little more sized.
And then there's the one up top.
They both kind of.
Not the one by, I think you're thinking of the one by the garage and.
Yeah, that's the baseball field.
No, that's not even one of the.
No, it's not the baseball field closer to the school.
Oh, I haven't been over there, so, okay.
All right, so there's a parking. You come, you'll notice, so when you first come, you go past that little parking lot you were talking about.
Yes.
Then there's the, the parking lot that accesses the field, that's A, that's parking lot A. The kindergarten lot is the second one, which is right outside the kindergarten, and then the one where the teachers parkway at the top, that's C. So what we're saying is if you're in the queue, if you're in the queue, you're gonna have to move, you can't stop and drop your child off, you gotta keep your kid in the park, but you're gonna go to the parking lot and hang out there until it's safe for, you know.
And hopefully it can hold them off.
And we talked about the use of the access road, you know, would it be used, wouldn't it be used? And, um, you know, the fire chief kinda wanted the ability to make that decision, because if the fire trucks come up the hill with their, you know, sirens going, people are gonna know, you can't sit there, right? So, you know, obviously if it's public to them, they, they'll know.
And the fact that it's locked too is an issue, because if another community got there first, which hopefully another community would, but they don't have access to it, um, to the lock.
Our fire guys do this.
Um.
I think people were trying to get away.
Yes.
But there was just nowhere to go.
Nowhere to go.
Way to go.
But now they'll be directed, you're, you need to go right down straight from the school to the parking lot.
The thing that it wasn't.
Yeah, it wasn't.
A real, like a big. Real issue that you're able to understand what needs to be done now.
Yeah, no, it's good when those things happen, right?
So, yeah, a drill, exactly, but a real life drill, you know, with the cars.
Yep.
Yeah.
And then we talked about the, uh, if the buses are there, either they're there, so they won't let the kids off, but they also talked about they won't even keep the kids there, so they'll, they'll drive them, and then we were talking about, well, where would be a staging area, so they were thinking maybe Saint Mary's Church, so Scott Hatch was gonna call Saint Mary's and just say, you know, if the buses come, it's just a temporary thing, because if you had to evacuate, for some reason, you'd just have parents come to that location anyway.
Well, somebody mentioned how you do, like that, like the building supply.
Yeah, cause it's pretty large there.
Chief Mitchell said that if there wasn't, like if there did.
He might stage there.
Happen to be a big issue, then he might need to utilize that parking lot for.
Right.
Seems to me we've used Saint Mary's parking lot before as a staging area.
That, it's in our evacuation plan, yeah.
Yeah, that's where evacuation is, yeah.
Yeah, so that, they said, they, they would, the police said they would stop anybody going up, and then, then Margaret will have to, uh, identify a, a team that, um, would be mobilized, you know, a contact person and a backup person to, you know, certain posts people would have to go to, right? So that, you know, somebody's telling people where they, where they have to go, so. I mean, it was, it was a great discussion, and, you know, everybody was, um, you know, really engaged, and I think Margaret and Hope are gonna write up.
Yeah, I wanted to make sure that something was in place.
Right, Margaret and Hope are gonna write up a procedure, and then they're gonna run it by all of us, and then it'll go out to the parents.
I would say, having, having been there for a drop-off, I mean, it was, it was, there was a lot going on, but there were, shortly after.
Yeah.
You know, things got a little bit crazy, but then teachers definitely came out and started to.
Yes, the teachers did a great job.
Kind of direct traffic and do stuff, which was.
And that's, but, you know, I think the briefing it with the teachers too, so the teachers can, you know, so the teachers can, um, kinda feel like they're part of it too, you know, but yes, big kudos to the, the teachers that just sort of figured out, like, that, you know, somebody needs to help control this, and, you know, and, and they, and they did.
Well, because at the same time, the kids were let off the buses, and they were allowed to play in the primary right next to the school.
Yeah.
Yeah. We didn't know if there was.
I don't know if right next to the cafeteria with you she was.
Right, cause nobody knew what, really what the issue was, I mean, we, obviously the alarm was pulled, so everybody knew they had to get out, but nobody knew really what it was, there was no smoke smell or anything like that, so probably people didn't feel like it was, you know.
A critical one.
A critical situation, but, but, you know, it's good to have, it would be good to have a procedure, so it was a good discussion, I agree.
Negotiations met last night, oh, did you wanna talk about something, like safety?
Uh, oh, no, no, no.
Oh.
I'm just going back in order, budget and finance.
Oh.
Met yesterday.
Yesterday.
And we have a, kind of a solid first, or first draft, or, or.
First strategy.
And we're meeting what, the sick, next week, right, Wednesday?
We're meeting next week, yeah, as well, um, challenging budget year.
Mm-huh.
Um, but I think we have a.
A handle on it.
A handle on it, a plan.
Yep. I think we have a strategy, you know?
Yeah.
Yeah.
That's good.
So, so we'll, the only thing we have to do, I, I, maybe we'll have to just make sure we contact Wayne and make sure he's coming to the meeting, because one of the things we wanna finalize is the, the, um, the actual, uh, dates.
Oh, yeah.
Right, because what we, what he was hoping for, and we were talking about it, was you would get the budget on the twenty-fourth. The, uh, in February, February twelfth, I think, you, we were gonna have to have a discussion about the budget plus a public hearing, and then he wanted the budget for the, on the, by the twenty-seventh or something like that week, that week, so we would have to have a spe- like last year, remember, we had to have a special meeting to adopt the budget, so that would be, if we did that, so if, if, if we presented to them on the twenty-seventh, which is what they were talking about. You would, so you would discuss it on the twelfth, plus have a public hearing.
Okay.
Then on the twenty-sixth, at, would have to be a special meeting, you would, you would have your final discussion and adopt it. And then, the following night.
Meet with.
You might have to meet with income, so, I don't know how they get the books and all that, but, that's something, but, we didn't, we kinda talked about it, but.
Nothing was said.
We couldn't, yeah, so I feel like we need to decide that.
Okay.
Okay, so that, you know, but, yeah, we'll have something for, we'll have the full budget for, for you on the, so we'll, we'll have the whole budget done for the Budget and Finance Committee next Wednesday. The whole book.
Okay, governance?
Right, Suzanne?
Do we have it already, you and I?
I know, we're in such good shape.
We're in so good.
The mail charging policy.
Oh, okay, good.
And we approved it, so. But in, we have a draft, yes, we have a draft of the crowdfunding.
Right.
That we're.
Okay.
Working, working on.
Negotiations met, uh, last night, and with the, um, GISA group, and, well, it was a quick meeting, we're meeting, we set the next four meetings, um, up, and they have a good group of people, and I'm looking forward to, you know, getting done and getting this, um, hopefully done within a couple of meetings, I hope.
Yeah, I hope, I hope, yeah.
Yeah, it, it, it looks like it's gonna be, um, good communication.
Yeah.
Um, public relations?
We have a meeting.
We're meeting on the twenty-second.
I was gonna say, I saw something on my calendar.
Yes, yeah. Yes, okay. Superintendent evaluation committee?
No.
I don't have anything set up, um.
I, no, I th- I don't, because I think, you know, the goals, the goals we have, um, and now we're just following the schedule.
The goals, well, yeah.
And what about CPAC?
Um, the CPAC has another, their next meeting is on February twelfth, uh.
I'll send that as ours.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Yeah, Tuesday, six forty-five PM, Understanding Dyslexia in the Context of Developmental Language at Georgetown Peabody Library.
Okay.
Okay, so, they're, they're the twelfth, okay.
I don't have anything else, unless anybody thinks I missed anything. Okay, we don't need to, um, have any discussion tonight, so I'll just make a motion to adjourn at nine fifteen.
So moved.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Great, thank you, have a good night.
Night.